Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
So I'd like to thank everybody for being here and I'd also like to thank the Grand Prairie Boys Choir for their rendition of Oh, Canada. Uh, this is, uh, the day after Canada Day, which was celebrated yesterday and I'd like to thank everybody for being here today. We'll start off with, uh, the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. And that is for June 4th. Who would like to make that motion, please? Hey, Mr. Minhaz. Hang on here. There you go.
Oh.
I've got control of it.
Thank you. I move the council, adopt the previous council meeting minutes on June, uh, Tuesday, June 4th, 2019.
Thank you very much. I call the motion, all in favor. There we go. All right, all votes have been cast. And that passes. Thank you. You have one other motion to go through. That's the special city council meeting held Thursday, June 6th, 2019. Mr. Dylan Bressi.
Thank you Chair O'Toole. I am happy to lead the charge on this. And I would move that we, that council adopt the minutes, the special city council meeting held Thursday, June 6th, 2019, as presented.
Right. Thank you very much. All in favor? Start the vote. And we're good. And that passes. Thank you very much. Just in case you're wondering why Bill Given isn't at the head of the council today, uh, he's out of town and I'm acting deputy mayor for today. So with that, we will move on to the adoption of the agenda. Looking for a motion. Mr. Clyde Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. O'Toole. I would move the council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. We'll start the vote and please vote now. And that passes. Thank you very much. All right, we have item five is the delegations and community agenda items. And we have under 5.1, the Canadian Association of Petroleum Producers to give us an industry update. And if you'd like to just take your seat at the table there and I will get you to state your name and, uh, put it in the record.
Very good. Uh, my name's Chris Montgomery. I'm the manager of E and P Engagement, I believe, for the Canadian Association of Petroleum Producers. Uh, so first of all, thank you very much for having us up. Um, and, uh, thank you for your support of the oil and gas industry over the years as well. Uh, it's been very much appreciated. Uh, of late in particular, I want to thank you for your support on Bill, uh, C 69, which I'll talk about a little bit later on. Um, and in particular, I did want to thank Mayor Given for a couple of, um, instances where we called on him for a particular help and, and he was abiding of that. So that was, uh, was very much appreciated as well. Um, so for those of you who aren't familiar with CAP, uh, as our name suggests, we represent the oil and gas industry in Canada. Uh, we have about, uh, 70 members and they produce about 80% of all of Canada's oil and natural gas. And we have everything from small independent privately held companies up to the big multinationals that, uh, that you get your gasoline from at the pumps. Um, so I'll just give you kind of a very brief overview of where we're at in 2019. Uh, from an industry activity perspective and some of the issues that we're working on, uh, as an industry association. So first of all, unfortunately, 2019 is going to be a very tough year, has been, uh, will continue to be a tough year for the industry. Uh, we expect capital spending in the sector to be off by about eight percent this year. This will be the third straight year of declines of capital spending by the industry in Canada. Um, and that's despite the fact that we have a so-called recovery and, uh, the number of reasons for that that I'll talk about. Um, with that, uh, decline in capital spending, we also expect a decline in the number of wells drilled, uh, in Western Canada. So last year we drilled approximately 6,100 wells, uh, across Western Canada. This year we're expecting that to be around 5,500. Uh, so again, from an activity standpoint, uh, it's also going to be a difficult year. Uh, from a pricing standpoint, uh, natural gas continues to face challenges. Um, we see large fluctuations in the market and again in 2019, we've seen periods of time, uh, where our price for natural gas is actually negative. And so that means producers are having to pay people to get rid of their natural gas. Uh, and we've seen that, uh, be the case in the last week or so. Uh, and, uh, on the oil side, you know, we saw the most dramatic consequences of not having pipelines and access to markets, uh, in the fall. Uh, with the provincial government, uh, having to step in, uh, and, uh, place a cap on oil production in the province. Um, and, uh, that obviously significantly hinders growth potential going forward. Uh, but it was, uh, you know, I think, uh, in the province's eyes, necessary in order to stabilize prices. And in particular, they would have faced a significant, uh, revenue crunch, uh, due to a lack of royalty, uh, income from the industry. If, uh, if prices stayed where they were for a number of months. So the only long-term solution to our challenges, both for natural gas and for oil, uh, is additional, uh, capacity and access to additional markets. Um, we've, on the LNG side, we've seen some positive developments with the approval, uh, or the final investment decision, I should say, of LNG Canada's project on the West Coast. Um, but they are facing some challenges on their pipe, um, which have been, um, in the news. Uh, and the reality is, uh, for our natural gas producers, we're going to need more than one major project on the West Coast. Uh, if we're to be successful as an industry going forward. So, uh, one would be great, um, but, uh, ultimately we're looking for more than that, uh, as an, as an industry going forward. Uh, on the oil side, we have three proposed pipelines, uh, that would, uh, provide additional capacity for oil. Uh, and provide sufficient capacity for oil probably out to somewhere around 2030, 2035. Uh, which is important to keep in mind, uh, that even if we get those three pipelines built in a few years, we're going to have to have this conversation again. Um, but despite, um, you know, a positive decision by the federal government on, uh, the trans mountain expansion. Um, all three of those pipelines are facing delays and, um, oil won't be flowing through them certainly in 2019. And unlikely to be the case in 2020 at this point in time. So, uh, just quickly want to touch on some policy challenges we're facing with the federal government and then talk about, uh, what we're working on with the new provincial government here in Alberta. Um, recently the Senate has passed two, uh, pieces of legislation, Bill C 69, which revamps, uh, the environmental assessment process federally for major projects. Um, we were successful, uh, in getting a number of amendments, uh, passed, uh, by the Senate, which we felt would make that bill workable. Unfortunately, the federal government and the House of Commons ultimately did not adopt, uh, a sufficient number of amendments to make that, uh, bill, uh, conducive to future, uh, projects for the oil and gas industry. Uh, so it will, um, inhibit, uh, the potential for future projects going forward, including by the way, LNG projects as well. It's not just about oil pipelines. It's in fact not just about the oil and gas industry. It's about a number of sectors, uh, that need to build large infrastructure. Uh, the second piece of legislation that was passed was Bill C 48, which is tanker ban on, um, the, uh, transport of, uh, a number of kinds of crude product, products. Uh, and, um, that obviously inhibits Alberta's ability to access additional markets, particularly Asian markets. Uh, and we feel that that bill, uh, is, uh, A, unfair and B, not built on science. Uh, and again, uh, inhibits our ability to get major projects built, uh, in the future. Uh, and finally, just want to touch quickly on the, um, the, uh, fuel standard, uh, the carbon fuels, fuel standard, um, being proposed by the federal government. Uh, we view that essentially as a, an additional carbon tax on top of the carbon tax that we'll already be paying as an industry. And so we're, um, working on that one, uh, as well. Uh, provincially, uh, the new government, uh, when it comes to our industry is, uh, focused on its red tape production program. Uh, we're working, uh, closely with them on that. Um, our hope is that it's not just about, um, eliminating, um, regulations that are no longer in effect, but they're actually, um, proposing, uh, real solutions that will reduce our cost burden, uh, as an industry, uh, going forward. So we continue to work with them positively on that file. Um, the other two, uh, pieces that we're working on and they're related, uh, is municipal taxes. Um, not so much, uh, concerned about, uh, cities and towns, uh, but in certainly in rural parts of the, uh, of the province. Um, and we're concerned about things like, uh, asset deductibility over time and what that looks like. And, um, the process for determining assessment year modifiers. Uh, it's a particular concern in dry gas areas of the province where municipal taxes take up a significant portion of operating costs. Um, which, uh, companies don't have direct control over. Uh, and then the last area is on, uh, the issue of liability closure in orphan wells, which is all kind of tied together. Uh, and making sure we have an appropriate system that encourages the retirement of assets in an appropriate way. Uh, and that companies are taking care of their environmental responsibilities. Uh, and finally, I'll just conclude by saying that, um, you know, as I welcome your support as council, also, uh, looking for ways to, um, deepen our engagement with you. So if you have any ideas on that going forward, um, certainly willing to come up and see you guys more often, whether that's formally or informally. So I'll leave it there and, uh, thank you. If we have time for questions, certainly willing to take some.
I'm about to ask my crew here if they would like to ask you some questions. So is anybody in the queue here? Mr. Thiessen, please.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor O'Toole, Deputy Mayor O'Toole, Mr. O'Toole, Chair of the meeting. Uh, just a couple of questions. First, uh, first question is, uh, in regards to any updates on the crude by rail contracts. I know it wasn't outright canceled yet, but, uh, where are negotiations with the provincial government in that?
Yeah, so I'm not sure. I, all I have to go off of is, um, is, uh, the reports that have been in the media. So I understand it from those reports that the province is looking to, uh, effectively commercialize those contracts that are in place and, um, you know, get the private sector involved, but where they're at and what that looks like, I'm just not sure.
Okay, that's, uh, good to know. Um, the other question that I had, uh, there was a matter of two weeks between the time that the new government, uh, took power and, uh, and then when they took power and they canceled the carbon tax deal. Um, where I was in Edmonton and the price at the pump at Edmonton was a dollar 17 on May 29th. And then when I came back through, uh, two and a half weeks later, the price at the pump I filled up at was 87.9. So, uh, perhaps as a representative of CAP in the oil industry, why would we see that huge of a decline at the, of in price at the pump, uh, after the carbon tax, which is only like a seven cent?
So, um, first of all, state that, uh, CAP only represents the upstream, uh, producers. We don't represent downstream, uh, refining industries. Um, but, uh, so as I understand it, as at the same time the carbon tax was coming off, there were also additional refining capacity coming back online. There were some refineries in North America that were down, uh, for maintenance and some of those were coming back. And so that also added to, um, the decline in prices at that particular time.
Okay. And do you think that'll sustain through the summer?
Uh, certainly prices have come up quite a bit again in Calgary when I last filled up, so, um, we'll have to see.
Thank you.
Very much. Uh, next speaker is, uh...
Great. Thank you. Thanks for making the trip up. I appreciate it. I've got two questions for you. One is, as we look at advocacy in this area, we've really relied on, uh, we're part of the Resources Communities Canada Coalition. And we've been kind of taking our lead through them and advocacy through them. I'm just kind of curious, how's the relationship with that organization and CAP?
Yep, great. So, um, AUMA has taken the lead on that. Um, we've been there offering support to them, uh, throughout, um, as they've gotten themselves up and running. Um, probably time for me to touch base again with, uh, with Barry from AUMA. Um, but yeah, certainly however, we can help that, uh, that group, uh, going forward. We're certainly happy, happy to do so.
And then my other question is, uh, one of the, one of the bills of this new government is Bill 7, which allows municipalities to create property tax incentives for investment. I'm wondering if you've heard any rumblings about municipalities talking about using that to support the petroleum industry? If there's been any asks out there or if you know anything about that?
Uh, not specifically. I guess what I would say though is what we find, um, you know, in the downstream industries, which again CAP doesn't represent, but we have significant interest in because they're buyers of our products. You know, municipal taxes are a significant issue in that space, um, and mostly because our competitors are primarily around the Gulf of Mexico. Um, and a lot of those municipalities will just waive municipal taxes in order to attract some of those large, uh, projects. So certainly giving the municipalities some flexibility in that space, uh, could be helpful. It certainly, uh, gives them flexibility to, uh, work with proponents to try to attract some of that business. So, uh, you know, it's positive.
Very much. And we have Mr. Puller. Go ahead. I just touched your mic there. I double thumbed you there.
All right, I'm on again. Um, just a couple of questions as well. Um, you had stated that capital spending was going with, had decreased and had for a few years. What, do you have any kind of sense or pulse on what you think's going to happen for 2020? I know it's a little ways away, but where do you think capital's going to line up in 2020?
Yeah, so it's too early for CAP to say. So we, um, make our projections based on actual announcements by a number of our members in the public space and some survey work as well. So we generally only put out our forecast for, uh, for the year, um, towards the end of February. So, um, we don't tend to forecast that far out. Um, but certainly without, you know, oil pipelines in the ground, uh, gas starting to flow through LNG projects, the, the challenges that we're facing as an upstream industry are going to continue for a number of years.
Just for a sense of context, you said eight percent, but, you know, the third straight year. So what, what was capital spending, uh, in, in Alberta three years ago versus now for, for the bill?
Um, so this year we're estimating 37 billion.
Okay.
Um, I can get you the number from three years ago, but in 2014 it was 81 billion. Uh, and that was the last, you know, good year, uh, you know, in that run from 2008 to 2014. So we're less than half, than half of that.
And I appreciate that. That's, uh, those are big numbers and they're playing a huge part in unemployment and growth of Alberta right now. But, um, but my only other question, I guess, is, and I know Mayor Given, we've sent letters, we've done our things, but is there anything else as a council we can be doing to support CAP? And I mean, within reason, I guess, the, the worry that I have is that, you know, Grand Prairie is very dependent on gas growth. And, and most of our growth comes from natural gas if we're going to have any growth. Um, so, you know, it's fine if we're not going to grow, but if we want to grow, uh, the, this is the industry that generally drives the ball.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, again advocacy on some of those big federal pieces where we're seeing some real challenges right now, um, would be helpful. Um, the other thing, to be honest, I wouldn't mind sitting down with you guys and finding out some, what some of the challenges you're facing with industry as well. And perhaps there are areas where we can align on some of that stuff, um, whether that's, you know, on the downstream pieces or elsewhere. Um, certainly would welcome that conversation. Um, but, you know, the clean fuel standard certainly is one, um, that I could point you to, uh, at this point in time. And, uh, yeah, look, you know, would be happy to have that conversation otherwise.
That's great. Thank you. All right. Mr. Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Chair O'Toole, and thanks again, uh, Mr. Montgomery for being here. Uh, just, uh, one, one quick question, uh, in regards to CAP. Uh, I know you don't try to meddle into your, your membership's affairs, but, uh, what is CAP doing on behalf of the workers who are working in the oil field as far as protecting them? I know the provincial government just passed, uh, you know, the banked overtime laws into one of their bills as well as, uh, automation is playing a big role in, uh, replacing actual laborers in the, in the oil industry. What's CAP doing, uh, on behalf of the workers?
Yeah, so certainly, uh, on the health and safety side, you know, we, uh, have a number of health and safety committees that are in place that, uh, that work on these kinds of issues. We, um, worked to help transform and inform in recent years to capture more of our industry, um, and some of those best practices and that sort of thing. Um, I don't know that we've looked specifically at the overtime, uh, and Bill 7, uh, so frankly don't know on that one. Um, and then sorry, there was another aspect that...
Just in automation.
On automation, yeah.
A lot of jobs.
So I think, um, I don't know where that goes in the long term. Um, the benefit of automation, of course, is lower cost. And in the situation we're in, companies are going to do what they can to lower their costs. Um, obviously not at the price of, of health and safety though. Um, and one of the reasons we're allowed to see, you know, the boom that we have in this particular region and why you've been relatively isolated, um, is through technology developments as well, right? So companies control drilling rigs, or can anyways, from, from, you know, control rooms in Calgary now. Uh, and, you know, the ability to continue to produce at, at lower cost, uh, is what's keeping, you know, the economy as good as it is, even, you know, despite its challenges. So, um, not sure where the future of all that stuff goes. Obviously it's based on technology and R and D and all that kind of stuff. But, um, it's certainly a trend that's probably not going anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, we have, uh, Mr. Minhaz.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh O'Toole, and thanks for, uh, Mr. Montgomery to come here to update the thing. I asked what chances are the Trans Mountain Pipe will start up this year in the summer is, uh, just no reason why I'm asking this, but Mr. Trudeau said he'll start this summer.
Yeah. Um, so oil certainly won't be flowing this year, uh, but the hope is that construction could at least start again. Um, and again, I can only really rely on what's been, um, said publicly. Um, a guy by the name of Ian Anderson is the head of the company, um, has said very publicly that his hope is to get shovels in the ground sometime in September. Um, so, um, you know, a lot of their pieces as a company were in place, ready to go, obviously before the last court decision. Um, it takes some time to kind of gear up again, but, you know, a lot of that work is, is already complete, so, um, to ready the project. But, uh, yeah, hopefully by September.
It'll happen.
Yeah. I guess I should say too, the NEB, so where the process is now, uh, the federal government has given its approval to the NEB to grant the certificates. The NEB is looking, uh, currently, and I think we find out, if I'm not mistaken, sometime this week, or they're going to start the process this week. Um, uh, considering whether or not they, uh, reinstate the project at its previous state. So there are a number of regulatory decisions the NEB has to take in the short term before they could put shovels in the ground as well. So, uh, that will be the first step is to see what the NEB does and what they decide, uh, and we'll have a better sense of that, I, again, after this week, I believe.
This is not a factor for, uh, see Bill C 69?
No, no. Uh, it was captured on the, the previous process, so, uh, Bill C 69 does not, uh, impact, uh, trans mountain.
Thank you.
Mr. Bressi.
Great, thank you. I'd like to go back. You mentioned a little bit about municipal taxation and assessment modifiers. And I know that linear taxes are a concern of many urban municipalities too, in terms of, we feel that the current arrangements fundamentally unjust to our citizens. And that's something we'd like to see changed, but I'm curious, what are some of the specific changes CAP would like to see with that?
Yeah, so with the AYMs, it's, um, in parts around, and this is, I think, where there's some alignment with municipalities, uh, around transparency of the process and the ability to have a meaningful conversation before decisions are made. Um, so that's kind of the most important piece. Uh, and then, um, just making sure from an industry perspective that, um, what's being accounted for is actually reflecting the reality of the industry at, at that time. And it's mostly around construction costs, um, where we've seen some challenges. Um, and then on depreciation schedules, it's, um, you know, we've got situations where, uh, again, it's particularly in dry gas areas where some of our members tell us that, um, their tax bill is worth, is higher than what they feel as a company that their assets are worth. Uh, and that's obviously not sustainable and the direct result of that is companies will shut in their assets, um, if that's the case. Uh, and so there's some work to be done there on the depreciation schedules from, from our point of view.
So it sounds like what you're saying is you're talking all regulated property where it's provincially assessed and that's, that's, it sounds like you've got issues with provincial assessment more than municipal assessment and municipal to bring.
So I have a, uh, comment. Uh, we were just, a bunch of us were down in, uh, Quebec City.
Yep.
For the FCM conference. And in the morning I would go down to every different table and try and talk and get the relationship going that we need energy as well. And, uh, what I found was most people were against the rail cars, but they want to see the pipelines. When I talked to the people from the West, BC, they didn't want, they wanted the pipelines, they just didn't like what's going in the pipelines. And, uh, that was pretty much, uh, what we found, I found on a daily basis.
No, appreciate that. Um, I, you know, the conversation's come a long way from where it was a couple of years ago, but obviously we still have work to do as, as an industry to, uh, help build some of that, uh, support for projects, for sure.
All righty, well, I see nobody else is asking questions. I do want to thank you very much on behalf of Mayor Given, uh, and, uh, council for being here today with great update.
Okay, thank you very much.
And we have, uh, the Grand Prairie Public Library Board. If you guys could come to the table, sit down and just introduce yourselves so we can put it in our permanent record, then we're good.
Hi, I'm Deb Kreiderman.
Hi, I'm Mark Evans, and I'm the Chair of the Board for the Library.
Perfect.
And this is hardly intimidating.
If I could get you to just push your microphone a little bit closer to you and then I think we get good sound and everybody will be happy. So, uh, welcome to City of Grand Prairie Council.
Thank you. I can't see a darn thing. I've got 18-point font and still need the glasses.
It's okay.
Is that okay there?
You're, you're good?
I'm good. Okay. Uh, Honorable Acting Deputy Mayor O'Toole, I think I got all that right. Oh, I'm squealing. Am I too close?
Just keep talking.
Just keep talking. And councillors, though, somebody else is going to move it. This is fancy. Okay. And councillors, um, I'm, my name is Deb Kreiderman, and after being across the street, I think that direction, um, for, uh, over seven and a half months, I thought it was time for me to come and introduce myself to you. I'm the extremely lucky new director of the Grand Prairie Public Library. Um, and I'd like to thank Mark Evans and the hiring committee for allowing me the privilege of filling this role. And thank you to all of you today for finding some time in your busy schedule so I could visit. Since I've arrived at the Grand Prairie Public Library in November, we've changed a few things at the library. Um, if you are to visit us today, you would see we are working on creating some more spaces for people to meet or work in small groups. We're carving out some quiet areas for people to study or do research. And we're making sure that the need for community space is met, so every visitor feels like the library belongs to them. We are removing obstacles, currently, uh, blocking our magnificent windows and the view onto the, am I going to pronounce this correctly? Mamawee? 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 Ah, I practiced that a dozen times. Anyway, Mamawee concourse on the south side of the building. Um, we've also launched a few new projects. Um, in mid-June, we launched our library of things. You can now borrow a record player or a vehicle code reader or a basketball rebounder, bocce set, among many other things. Um, this collection was an immediate hit and, uh, just a second, it was an immediate hit and most items are out all of the time. In fact, there is one item that has had a minimum of five people waiting for it since it started. We anticipate this collection to grow as the community communicates with us what they would like to see be part of it. And just last week, on June 25th, we launched something called Binge Bags. These are a themed, staff-curated bag of books or DVDs to make selection fast and easy for patrons. If you're looking for racy romances or blissful beach reads, or even hair-raising horrors, we have packaged them all in easy grab-and-go bags. These two were an immediate hit and within the first hour, three of them had already been checked out. This morning, there were only two left on the shelf out of the 18 we had. Um, our summer reading game is one of our most popular programs that we run during the year and it is starting right away. The summer reading game helps stop the summer slide that schoolchildren face over the summer, um, as they take a break from, from school. Um, by participating in fun reading-related activities and challenges. The game is also open to teens and to adults. There's a little package that was sent around that has, uh, participation in there for you. Um, so we're expecting strong anticipation from the users of the community, including all of you. We've had a great number of prizes donated to us for the summer reading game, including tickets for the Bear Creek Folk Festival. While I'm here, I would also like to invite you to our summer reading game kickoff party on July 8th, from 1:00 till 4:00 PM. Um, there will be a bouncy castle. Yes, exactly. Finally, speaking to, of parties, um, this is our 80th year of the Grand Prairie Public Library's life and our 10th year over at the Montrose Cultural Public Library's life, and our tenth year over at the Montrose Cultural Center. And we can't let that milestone pass without some sort of recognition. So we're planning a birthday party for a couple of hours on the afternoon of June, or June, October third. Official invitations will be heading your way in September, but I would love you to save the date and join us for a slice of cake, some stories, and possibly some dancing. If there's anything the library can do to support council, please feel free to reach out. I have left my business card in the package with you, too. And that's my whole show.
So, Mr. Mark Evans, do you have anything that you would like to say as the Board Chair? Or did Deborah say everything?
Yeah, pretty much said it all. I was here for moral support for Deb, and just also to be here for her to introduce herself with to Council. And again, thank you for their support of the Public Library as well.
Well, you did a great presentation. You got lots of information out. And I'm just going to open the phone lines here to see who's next to like to talk. And it looks like Mr. Bresi has got something to say.
Great, thank you. Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it. I'm kind of curious, a challenge I'm sure you guys are very aware of in our community is our loss of daytime shelter space. And I'm curious, how's that affected the library? And how have you guys been addressing those challenges?
We've always been a space in the community for everyone. So we expect that with the loss of shelter space, that the same people are going to show up. And they have been. We have also recently made administration of naloxone training available to our staff. So we just did that a couple of weeks ago.
If you may, one more question?
Absolutely.
I'm kind of curious, with your guys' membership, do you guys track what percentage of members are City of GP residents, and what percentage are other municipalities?
Yes. I don't know that number. I can get that to you.
I'd love that if you're able to sometime. Thank you.
You've been doing that for a number of years.
We, yeah, I think since, yeah, since we've been automated anyway, so forever.
I'll move to Mr. Palet.
Thanks, Chair O'Toole. Just a question, just to, you know, when it comes to corporate services annually, we, the library has their own set of financials that kind of rolls in the cities. And one of the questions that I'm just kind of curious about is there's a decent amount of reserves that are built up in the library. And I'm just wondering what what exciting upcoming projects we can look forward to with those reserves and what they're, what they're going to be, what the plan is, I guess, what they're moving for in the next few years.
Perfect. You might want to speak to some of this. I'm going to start off by saying a lot of those reserves are named reserves. They can only be used for certain things. Yeah, we have some new chairs coming. We're really excited about. We, oh, what have we done recently? Oh, I just, we, trying to think, what have we done? We just had the Collins Writing Contest. We have a Collins Reserve Fund. So the Collins Writing Contest is an annual contest that we have. People submit stories they've written. They are then judged, and the top winners are all compiled into a book, which you can come and buy at the library. It's also available if you'd just like to borrow it. What else have we got going on? We are redoing the genealogy space. And they have been finding that there isn't enough space in there for them to work as a group, or for them to gather as as a larger instructional situation. So we've made some space for them, and we have some chairs and tables on order for them. We have, the Jensen money is our biggest reserve. And what are we doing with that? Unless there's something really specific, we don't spend it.
Created the technology in the Johnson Room, where they have the movie nights and stuff. So now when you sit in the boardroom, you can hear the movie playing because the sound system's been upgraded. And I think some of the money was, you can correct me and kick me if I'm wrong, rejection systems in the Rotary Community Room as well.
Oh, yeah. The Rotary Community Room's beautiful now. And you don't even have to plug in your computer to wires hanging from the ceiling. You just plug it into the wall. It's beautiful. Sound system, it's beautiful.
I appreciate that. Just, I guess the Jensen one's the one that I was, you know, kind of wondering about. It's, it was amazing that somebody left behind that kind of legacy. But I guess the fear sometimes I have is that you want other people to do the same thing in the future. But if if the money's not being used, it's hard to, you know, it might be hard for future families to see their value in dwelling funds if they're not seeing the value of what's being spent inside the facility at some point. So just a, it's just a concern for me. I think it's a great opportunity for you guys. And not that you wanted to spend money to spend money, but it would be nice to see that get allocated to something at some point. So. And at the, at the board levels as well, we've been doing more work in the past year around strategic planning, sort of that longer range vision of where, what does the community need ten, fifteen years from now? We have our Plan of Services, takes us out a few years, that the government expects. But what will libraries look like ten, fifteen years from now? And we do have this money, so we can start thinking about this, that now, and start guiding our way that way. So we've been, as a board, we've been looking at doing that work as well. Thank you.
See, one more guy here. Will and Bresi.
Great, thank you. Well, I appreciate you guys coming in. It's great hearing from you guys. It's, my kids are at the library all the time, and I am occasionally, and I love, I think it's so important, this. Something I'm excited that we're going to be doing in the fall is a review of our relationship with boards and committees. And something I just want to throw out there is, I don't know if you guys have ever thought about what you want this relationship to look like. But it would be sure great to hear from you if there's changes you want to make to it, since we're going to be reviewing that anyways. So just something I want to throw out there.
We'll think of that.
I'm writing it down. That's all I've got.
Part of the strategic planning stuff we've been doing, and we've been working with the the staff at the City Moors, about looking at our board and what are the, what are the skills and competencies we have on our board, and then reviewing those. And does that take us towards our strategic plan? And then working with the staff here about, we would, we think we need people in this area, and we need skills to bring to the library. So that is something that's been doing, and it's worked really well with the staff between the board. Working with them and providing that information for you as you make your decisions about. So we've been doing that kind of work as well. So it's been great that way. So I think more of that initially is my initial thought is is great.
Excellent. Well, I'll just touch in here. I was on the board when Willie Johnson had that money donated. And it took us quite a while to decide on how we wanted to make perfect investment. And that new area is obviously doing some good. It's allowing more programs and meeting areas. So as a board member, I know we lost a lot of sleep trying to make the right decision, and spend the appropriate amount of money to make what we needed. So thank you very much for running the library. Thank you for volunteering your time to be a board member.
You're welcome. The library's a fun place to be.
Thank you for.
So with that, I see there's no other councillors in the queue. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And on behalf of Mayor Given and the rest of council that aren't here, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, we're moving down to unfinished business. Item six point one, the Bylaw C dash ten sixty-four K, Business License Bylaw Amendment. And I'm going to ask Legislative Services Manager Arlene to lead us through this.
Thank you.
All right, I can push your button, sure.
Thank you. So this amendment updates the licensing and regulation of business bylaw by replacing references to the old fee schedule. That was replaced with the new fees and charges bylaw passed at the special meeting of council held on June sixth. So at this time, we are asking council to give three readings to this bylaw amendment.
With that, anybody that wants to make those. Oh, I've got Mr. Minhaz. Please.
Thank you, Mayor Jack O'Toole. Sorry, Kavner O'Toole.
I think I'm just going to take you off that list now.
Oh, sorry about that. But, you know, came out anyhow.
That is.
I move the council gave the first reading to bylaw C ten sixty-four K, being amended to the Business License Bylaw.
Motion's in order. Call for the vote. And go ahead. And we have the results. That's passed. Thank you. And move on to the second reading.
I move the second reading. Council gave the second reading to bylaw C ten sixty-four K.
Thank you. And that motion is. Anybody have any comments? No? We'll move for the vote. Start now. And those are the results. So passes. We have third reading.
Can I have, can I have third reading of bylaw C ten sixty-four K at this meeting?
We have to vote on this. It has to be unanimous. Otherwise, we move on. So move on to the vote. And start now, please. That passes. So we can have third reading at this meeting.
I give the council gave the third reading to bylaw C ten sixty-four, being amended to the Business, Business Bylaw.
Excellent. Okay, we'll call for the vote. And start now. And the results, that passes. So thank you very much. We are now good to go. With that, we will talk about item six, or item seven, which is the reports, and it's seven point one to twenty twenty budget. And from my understanding, we have Mayor Given and Councillor Clayton going to phone in on this. Do we have them on cue?
Hello, Counsel O'Toole.
Hello. Welcome. Is Councillor Clayton there as well? I hear no Councillor Clayton. So thank you, Bill, for joining us. And we can start off with the report. And the budget recommendation. Who wants to?
I think that would be me, Deputy Mayor O'Toole.
I was just going to say, there is a recommendation there, but I'm pretty sure you want to talk about it.
Sure. Well, absolutely. This comes from my notice of motion a couple of council meetings ago. And so I'll make the motion that council direct administration prepare the twenty twenty budget with a property tax increase not to exceed three point seven five percent. And I would be happy to speak to that if now be appropriate.
Yes, please do.
Sure. Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. So just, you know, for council's consideration, this, the intent of this motion is really to provide guidance to management. We absolutely will have an opportunity to do debate and decision-making in the fall when we see budget. But management undertakes a pretty significant process of budget development that has actually already started. And my understanding is, and for context, my understanding is that at this stage, after all of the results of our twenty nineteen budget discussion, the twenty twenty budget tax increase would be somewhere above six percent. And I am pretty certain that there is nobody on council that imagines that that is what we would like to see. And so this motion today is intended to give management some direction on what they should be bringing to us for discussion and debate in the fall. At that time, obviously, we would still have the opportunity to, you know, duke it out, I guess, and look for lower amounts. But we would be able to do that with full information in front of us. And so again, this really is to give guidance to management as they develop the budget. And in the fall is when we would get that opportunity to discuss and debate the merits of the budget that management would present to us.
Excellent. So I'm going to open the floor to discussion and debate at this point in time. And I don't see anybody in queue yet. So, oh, I have Councillor Wade Palet.
Thanks, Chair O'Toole. Just a question for administration. For our twenty twenty budget, what were we forecasting for potential revenue growth? So I can get an idea of how that can impact our budget as well.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. Our forecast this year, I believe, is one point five million dollars for growth.
Any other questions? So, and I just want to, there was an email circulated. So one point one million equals one percent. Is that the number that we're using for this? Or?
That is correct, yes.
That's great for now. Thanks.
And next speaker is Mr. Bresi.
Thank you. Question, Mayor Given, I think, I want to make sure we're all on the same page as we're discussing this. So three point seven, just reading the motion, prepare a budget with a property tax increase not to exceed three point seven five percent. I could read that a couple different ways. I'm assuming you're meaning three point seven five percent increase the average property tax bill. And I'm hearing this the same way that you intend it?
Yes, absolutely. Sorry, Deputy Mayor O'Toole, if I can respond.
Absolutely, please do.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Yeah, Councillor Bresi, you know, the intent, historically, we have talked about sort of the overall average. As council's well aware, they're, you know, pretty hard to find an average property in Grand Prairie. But this really says to management what that, what that middle line expectation should be. Obviously, assessment and the, I guess, levying of the the rate is subject to, you know, the differences in the market. The intent here is not that everyone would get a three point seven five percent increase, or even that council ultimately will approve anything resembling a three point seven five percent increase. It's to give management the direction that as each individual department is preparing their budget, they should not be exceeding anything that would lead to greater than three point seven five percent.
Mayor Given. Any other questions? I see none. Go ahead, Mr. Bresi.
Thank you. It's interesting. I don't know, I don't know what the sense of council is. I definitely can't support this motion as it is right now. I'm considering moving an amendment, but I'm kind of curious what others are feeling. And for me, it's, I can't justify asking the average taxpayer to see their bill go up by more than inflation this year. As I've been, something I've been doing is, I've been, I've been reading through the financial statements of all the other mid-sized municipalities in Alberta. And that's a tricky thing to do, because we all do accounting slightly differently, and we all deliver different services. But anyway, I skim the cat, it appears that we're spending more per capita, more per kilometer of road, more in a whole bunch of different measures than our competitors have. Like I said, that's a difficult way to skin a cat, though. So something else I've been looking at is our last ten years of property tax bylaws, as well as our population growth and our number of dwelling unit growth according to both our own numbers and municipal fairs numbers. And if I look at the last five years, our average tax levy increase has been three point nine percent over the last five years. It's been four point eight percent over the last ten years. And then when I add thing, when I add our population to our inflation growth, we've only grown by two point five percent. When I add our number of dwellings to inflation growth, just any way I look at it, our tax levies are increasing faster than, it seems to me it should when I look at our population inflation growth. So I can't support us asking people to pay more than inflation this year. So I can't support the motion as is. And I'm kind of curious what others at council are feeling before I potentially make an amendment or support, support another one.
I will go to the next speaker in queue, Mr. Palet.
Thanks, Chair. I'm very much in line with what Councillor Bresi's saying. I have, I have a hard time understanding if we're not adding new things to the community, or we're not adding a lot of things. Last year, I could get, we were adding a pool, we added a few things. But if we're not adding significantly things, I don't know how we can ask for more than inflation. And I want to, and I guess within inflation, if we're forecasting one point five million in growth, which is about point seven three percent, then to me, a two percent would put us at two point seven three, which is right what they're projecting for national and and provincial inflation for this year. So I'd be more inclined saying a maximum of two. The reason I'm also having a hard time with going higher than inflation is, I think, we're asking, I'm really loving this exercise being done now. It was one of the things I didn't like at budget last year was we're starting hammer on a number at budget time versus pre-time to give administration time to set up for a budget. If we're, if we're giving the marching orders of a certain number, then budgets can be built around that. And my fear is if we give a marching order at three point seven five versus two percent, the one point seven five percent will find a way to get spent. And I'm not saying people are just trying to spend money. It's just natural. If I, if you give somebody more money to spend, they're going to find a way to spend it. So I think if we're serious about trying to hold a line on our taxes and get more inflationary based, that we can't give our marching orders to be higher than that today. And we want, you know, and that allows CLT the ability to come back and work with their staff and their teams to work on that number, not a number that we're going to come to council in November and we're going to hammer on. I am really hoping that budget this year in November is, we were agreeing around a number today, and we're getting into minor little details about capital projects and spending here and there, but not trying to reset and do a major overhaul like we did last. but not trying to reset and do a major overhaul like we did last year budget, because I don't think anybody was happy with how, with how last year's budget went. Um, and so I just, I really think we need to be realistic about a number today, so I really appreciate Mayor Giving putting this in the conversation sooner than later, so we can have this conversation, but my appetite would be, we need to justify to our community how we can possibly be spending more than inflation when Alberta is bleeding right now. That's my two bits.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Blackburn, welcome back.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, a question for administration before I make my comment. It seems, my recollection is that when we were doing the budget deliberations for twenty nineteen and projections for twenty twenty, there may have been operational rather than, excuse me, rather than capital deferrals kinds of things that we, uh, put off, or decided that, uh, certain types of uh, organizational growth might be deferred by a year or two, um, in order to meet what we, uh, what we accomplished, uh, with the four point one percent, uh, decrease. Uh, am I right, are there things that, that were deferred to twenty twenty that, that now may be at risk if we have to start talking about, another year with very low increase in, um, in taxes?
Ms. Walker, please go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. Um, yes, that is correct, um, one of, one of the things that management committed to was delaying, um, staffing, uh, requests. And that has, um, delayed the development of some of the strategic areas in the organization.
Thank you for that, if, if I can just make a comment, then, um, when, when the budget was being formed, it was, uh, going to be a rolling four-year budget, and I appreciate that, that it still is going to be that. The concern I have is that if we put, um, further restrictions on what it is that administration is able to bring to us, we may be, um, uh, putting the brakes on some strategic planning or some, uh, organizational changes that, uh, we were counting on for making, um, uh, progress with council and with the city as a whole. So I'm a little concerned about, um, the fact that the original twenty twenty forecast was for a percentage even larger than three point seven five, and now we're asking for something that would probably be about half. Um, so I'd like just keep in mind that, uh, we might be, we might be putting the brakes on some of the things that we had intended to do, and, um, we should keep that in consideration when we make these decisions.
Very much. Mr. Counselor Chris Thiessen.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor Kevin O'Toole, appreciate it. Uh, I just got to throw my two cents here, uh, and I guess I'll start with a bit of a quote. Uh, forgive us for we know not what we do, I think is, is the question, and I don't know if, uh, other councillors have had a phone ringing, like my phone's been ringing over the last year. But their simple reduction in services of what we've, we've created has created kind of a firestorm of, uh, I guess reactionary cuts that our administration has had to make and our council has had to deliberate on. Everything from decreasing, uh, the number of transit trips, uh, someone takes, to increasing fares, to uh, having really long dandelions and grass blades on the side of the roads and boulevards, to potentially not being able to do all the things that we'd want to do. The way I see this, uh, three point seven five percent ceiling that's, uh, been offered up by the mayor is, uh, I kinda look at it as a wash as to our four percent reduction last year, and if we're just holding ourselves to inflation, um, I don't know how far ahead of the game that we're getting, we're getting to that point of maintenance. And I don't want to, in a, in a growing city like Grand Prairie, to start making these, these, uh, decisions that are going to, in effect, impede and or limit our growth. It's one thing to talk about creating efficiencies, but if you don't have any kind of financial baskets to, uh, dip into every now and again, you can't create the new innovations and efficiencies for our organization. We really tasked our administration, uh, at our last budget, to go beyond what they were already offering up. And beyond that, uh, part of the increase that we're currently looking at without this cap limit that the mayor's asking is based off of a decision that council made in restructuring our financial debt limit, whether we agree with that or not, it still passed, and we are dealing with that right now, so to limit even further the ability for administration to be fluid and nimble, uh, I think is really cutting off our legs, uh, or chopping off the wheels of the cart before the horse can even run. Uh, so I'm totally in favor of this, uh, of this motion that's being presented by the mayor, and I hope that council will consider, uh, the ramifications of any action that we undertake that would be different, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thiessen.
Counselor O'Toole.
Yes, sir.
If I can just get in the queue for, uh, debate.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, um, just, yeah, a couple of points, um, you know, there's sort of been a reference to, uh, and Counsel Thiessen just made one, and then previously about how much we're doing per year. And I guess I'd point council the fact that, uh, if this, if ultimately council chose to pass a budget that reflected this, which is still, uh, uh, something that we have control over in the fall, and those who wish to see further reductions in services or greater savings, um, would be able to vote for that on a case-by-case basis when we all had a chance to see what management would propose. Um, but in any case, over the course of two years, if we ended up passing a budget that reflected this number, that would mean that over two years, uh, the average, um, would be the, a reduction total, right? We had four point one on average last time, uh, and this would see a three point seven five. So that would mean the city of Grand Prairie's property tax increase over the course of those two years would actually be less than zero. Uh, so I think that's important to recognize, and, and also, um, depending on, uh, you know, exactly what, you know, management would, and maybe administration can provide this number, but if, uh, the twenty twenty budget currently reflects uh, something in the area of six and a half to seven percent increase, that means that the effect of this motion would be that management, in preparing the budget for our consideration, would have to find approximately three point three million, uh, maybe three and a half million dollars in cuts or savings between now and, uh, October, November, when we'll see the budget. So I don't think council should, um, A, imagine that we are growing at a rate faster than inflation, because, uh, when you take into account the fact that you have a reduction, um, then, then we need to consider that over the course of those two years, that over the city of Grand Prairie will see less revenue over the course of those two years than we did previously. Uh, and also that we are really keeping, um, our expectations high of management. Uh, if we expect them to find an additional three point three, three point five million dollars in, in cuts or savings between now and November, when all of us have experienced management coming forward with, uh, ideas and council, um, needing more time to consider them, and in some cases, not being willing to support them. Um, and so I think it, uh, might be, we might be overextending ourselves and, and creating too high an expectation if we say that it should be zero percent in twenty nineteen, or a number less than three point seven five. And to be clear, frankly, at budget time in the fall, I would be supportive of a number higher than three point seven five, because I believe that our growing community needs it. Um, but I'm willing to say that our management needs to have a better understanding of what council's expectation is, and I think that three point seven five, considering all these other factors, is a reasonable starting point. And we will have a good, hearty discussion and debate, uh, in the fall about the specifics of it.
Thank you very much. I understand, uh, Counsel Clayton is on the line right now?
Yes, I am, thank you.
I'm gonna let you jump into the queues since everybody's had a round of talk, and so you go ahead.
Thank you for that, um, I, I won't be in support of this motion, I appreciate the intent of setting the standard of expectation of where this number needs to be for administration to make their decisions going forward. However, in my opinion, we're on a good path here where we were at minus four point one of last term, and the expectation of, um, putting it at three point seven five is, it's just setting the standard of, of that it was okay. We took back, did a lot of work to get to the minus four, and then, in my opinion, we need to keep down that path. Administration, um, understands, I think, at this point, what the expectations are from this council, and, and that three point seven five is too high in my opinion, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Bressi.
All right, well, hey, I'm really appreciative of us having this conversation right now, so thank you again for raising this motion. Mayor Given, I'm glad that we're not gonna be doing the thing where we send administration away overnight to come up with solutions in the middle of budget, so I'm glad we're having this conversation now. That being said, I've made my views, views on it, it's great hearing from everybody else, I'm gonna make a motion to amend that, I don't know, it might be too aggressive for a council, but it's where I'm comfortable with, and I'll make a motion and then I'll speak to it. And my motion to amend is I would move the council amend this motion to read zero point eight percent. And to speak to that, the reason I'm picking zero point eight percent is, again, looking at the way that our spending compares to other municipalities, as well as looking at the growth it's had, our spending has had over both the last five and ten years, I think that we've still got room to do, room to grow and spending more, money more efficiently, also better targeted to community priorities. The average inflation rate, according to the Consumer Price Index in Alberta over the last ten years, was one point six percent. So the reason I picked zero point eight percent for my motion is because that's half the rate of inflation, so saying we'll give a little bit of growth there, but we're still gonna find some places to trim back our spending. That's through efficiency or whether that's pulling back on some services. Just to speak to a couple of concerns that I think might, might come up with this motion is, uh, first of all, again, we're talking about the average tax bill that's going, that's going out to people. So this doesn't preclude us from taking more income from new properties that come in line or from expanded assessments. So I think that this does build in growth of the city, as, we're just talking about we're gonna ding people for property they have right now as new properties are added, and our assessment's growing, and this motion allows for the growth to naturally happen with that. I think when it comes to service cuts and reductions, maybe I'm getting different phone calls than the rest of you are getting, but I actually haven't heard big pushback in the community, if anything, I've had less phone calls this year than I did, uh, the year before. I don't think our community is feeling the guts, that guts that we've made. And the last thing I want to say is, as I make this motion, as I support this motion, right now, I'm assuming that we're delivering the exact, that we're not, the council's not directing any service expansions, expansions next year, that we're doing the same amount next year in terms of slow removal, when it comes to spending on accessible transit, when it comes to addressing our homeless crisis. I know that there's some talks in the hopper right now about all those areas, and there might be a point where myself and other councillors support expansion of some services. If so, if we do that, then I think that our tax levies should go up along with those. So I'll definitely have a very different opinion on what I'm comfortable with if council directs some service increases. Right now, assuming that council's not directing any service increases, I just can't support three point seven five percent. I hope council supports my motion for zero point eight percent.
There is a motion that's brought up, uh, we can have some discussion on that. Wade Palat?
Uh, thanks, Chair, um, I'm struggling with point zero eight, uh, I definitely wouldn't support three point seven five. Um, I do want to remind us that a big reason we got to minus four point one last year and why I was, why I'm having a hard time getting over two percent inflation is we did debt restructure, we've already played that card, we've played that game. That was a massive, uh, swing in some of our cash flow and, and why, why we achieved, a big reason why we achieved the tax decrease we did. We've already played that card, and, and it's disappointing to me if we've already played a card that was supposed to help us, that we're gonna see, uh, an inflationary rate fifty percent above inflation is what we're proposing, and we did, we did do debt restructuring, so I'm really struggling with that. The one I'm struggling with you is I sent you guys an article at just the council a little while ago, and this is, this is, these are the kind of articles I get pretty regularly, I guess, but um, in the last five years, there's been sixty-one hundred jobs lost in Alberta in construction, mining, and oil and gas, and there's been seventy-three thousand jobs added to the public sector. And I think at some point we have to look each other in the eye and say, why is this one industry somehow need that sort of growth when every other industry is somehow making it work? And so, yeah, I'm, I'm with Counsel Bressi, I have not got as many complaints or phone calls or potholes and, and the standard things we get. I haven't had a lot of people concerned about some of the service levels we've done, and some people are still wondering why we're not doing more. And so I think we're, we're a council for a reason, there's some people are gonna say, hey, we, we gotta, we gotta keep the service levels. There's some people that are, that are like myself, saying, there's services that we're providing that our community doesn't see value in, and we're paying a lot of money on them, and I, I'm hoping that we start talking with some of those, those core services. Um, so I, I couldn't support zero point eight. I certainly cannot support anything over two, though. Um, and I think we just need to get our, our, our spending in line with our peers and stop worrying about, oh, boy, you know, we're, we're gonna hurt something when we start looking at why our peers are surviving, we have to start asking ourselves the tougher questions, and it does come to council. There's been things that our administration's brought to us that we haven't supported them on, and we need to support them on. Our, our, our council needs to get as much corporate backbone as our CLTs having right now, and, and we've hurt them with some stuff, so I hope that that's something when we come to budget, and CLT does bring ideas to us, that we actually listen to them, we support them on it, because they're putting a lot of work into finding these things. And it's, and it's disheartening to me when they're finding savings that we're not agreeing with them on those. And I, and I, yeah, I'll leave it at that, and we'll see where the conversation goes, but I, you know, I appreciate where you're going with that, uh, Counsel Bressi, I, I agree with you, I think we need to get our spending reduced still. I just can't point, support point zero eight. I would love to see, on a side note, if we land on whatever number we're landing on, and administration comes to us of what a zero could look like, all the way up to whatever the number we settle on is. So if we do get to this in budget again, at least there's already some preemptive thought of how we'd get down the number, instead of us saying get to this number, and then they have to do a midnight shuffle of trying to figure out where it's gonna look. So that would be something I'd have a huge appetite, is whatever number we settle on, if we wanted to get down by half percent increments, what would CLT recommend to do that? And that would be something that I could step a lot better than we did last year, but.
Thank you very much, I've got Counsel Blackburn, and Ms. Hawes and Thiessen in the queue.
And you can add me to that as well, Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor O'Toole, um, I guess the concern that I have with, um, uh, setting a number, especially one as low as Counselor Bressi is suggesting, is we're tying the hands of, uh, our professional people who not only know the budget, but actually live the budget. And I would, I would rather be hearing from administration uh, as they look at the, the needs and the wants of the community, to be coming back and telling us what the, uh, what the potential, um, budget for twenty twenty might look like if it meet, you know, if, if it meets our strategic expectations rather than, uh, a number. So, uh, I won't be voting in favor of the amendment, and, uh, I'm, I'm tempted to not vote in favor of the main motion either. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, we have Mr. Menhawes.
Thank you, Mayor Kevin O'Toole. I will not support this motion point eight, when I'm, I'm listening, listening to all the people, but they're gonna make a shortcut story. I'm okay with the three point seven this time to work out with the administration, because I trust the administration, how hard work they do, how much work they done last time, so they can bring it down in the fall, whatever the number comes, then we can decide it. They know, everybody talked to where we want it. I'm okay with the two percent, but I'll support this more, um, original motion, three point seven, I will vote for it, but I'm not supporting point zero eight this time.
Very much, Counsel Chris Thiessen.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Counsel Kevin O'Toole, I too won't be supporting this motion, I think it's too aggressive, and in fact, I think, uh, uh, I don't know, I, I think it's borderline pandering for whatever it's pandering for. Um, I want to, uh, I want to be expressly clear that, uh, I think it would be reckless, uh, for us to vote in support of Counsel Bressi's motion. Uh, just two things off the top of my head that I can think of that it might impact dramatically. Uh, we have so much uncertainty still around, uh, our, our union negotiations, that we don't know how that's gonna shape up and how that's gonna affect our budget. We also have, uh, a lot of speculation about what the future of DTS is gonna look like, if they're gonna continue on their own, if they're gonna need an increase of funding, or if they're gonna come under the city banner. Uh, all these things at a point eight percent, uh, tax increase is gonna severely impact us, uh, in the grand scheme of things. Uh, and I don't have the number in my head, but, uh, DTS alone, uh, I think is, uh, close to a million dollar contribution, as well as all the other stuff, if they stay existing as an organization, that's not to include any kind of increases. So, um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go that route, I think the mayor has laid it out, uh, pretty crystal clear, three point seven five, it sort of washed it out last year. Uh, and the reduction, it still keeps us at zero, and everyone else around us is still gonna be going up. So those, that, those graph charts that Counsel Bressi, you're looking at, uh, I think we're gonna get closer to that line anyways if we hold the line on the three point seven five percent. And as the mayor expressed earlier, um, if council wants to, we can reduce that at the budget time too. At least, uh, with this, uh, we're gonna be looking at maybe a two percent cut in, in favor of Counsel Palat's, uh, preferred, uh, final standing. Or we could look at a six or seven, um, but either way, I think point eight is reckless, so I won't be supporting the motion.
Mayor Given?
Thanks very much, um, Counsel Thiessen touched on a couple of points about, uh, budget making, uh, relating to uncertainty. Um, somebody didn't mention, uh, that I think it's important- Um, somebody didn't mention, uh, that I think it's important for council to recognize is, we don't yet know, uh, what our 2020, uh, MSI contribution will be from the province. Um, I don't believe that that is, uh, a stable amount. Um, and so we should be aware of that. Um, we also don't know what our ultimate, you know, cost of our CMP officers will be in 2020. Um, there are negotiations going on with that, and it's likely that that will settle prior. Um, those are just a couple of examples along with what councillor Thiessen mentioned of where, um, in management's budget preparation, there's a significant amount of uncertainty that we need to account for. And cutting it to the bone leaves no space, uh, for adapting to some of that uncertainty. Um, and, you know, similarly, I guess I just also raised that in terms of our, you know, 2019 budget, um, to be really frank, we haven't achieved the 4.1% reduction. Uh, without, at this stage, uh, taking out of reserves. I, I am worried for the first time in my career, uh, on council, that we're going to be in a position this year that we will have to withdraw from reserves to account for council's budget decision, uh, to balance the books. Uh, in the past, there has been at least one situation, uh, where Aqua Terra moved its, uh, corporate operations out of City Hall. And the city had an unexpected $2 million reduction in revenue. And, uh, in that year, I believe we had to take some money out of reserves to cover it. But other than that, I don't remember any year where a council approved a, uh, a budget number that required management to do withdrawal from reserves. As council's aware, we don't have a significant amount of reserves. And I think, uh, this idea of a .8, um, really flies in the face of that and would lead us to basically accepting that uncertainty, leaving us no space and management no space to operate. And ultimately putting us in a position where we will have to, uh, go to the rainy day fund to cover operating losses. Um, and I don't think that that's a legacy that I want to leave. I would encourage council not to support councillor Bressi's motion in the absence of more information. Um, I would encourage you, those of you that want to see budget reductions greater than 3.75%, to come to budget discussions in the fall with a list of services that you are willing to vote against fully funding. Um, that's reasonable and it would put all of us on the record of saying that there is a service that either A, we do or don't wish to see funded at whatever level. This guidance motion is actually kind of a, uh, a, a very challenging way and, and reduces the accountability that council members have for the direction that we give management. Because we won't see the impact of this. They, it will be challenging for the community to see how each council member's vote led to, uh, service decisions. It's reasonable at budget time that we say, yes, I'm in favor of expanding that, or no, I, I am not. Uh, or yes, I'm in favor of decreasing that service. Um, that's where ultimately each one of us will be individually held accountable. Um, this 3.75 is, is a reasonable amount that I think is, um, makes clear to management that what's on the books today doesn't hold water with this council. But doesn't get us so far down the path that management will essentially be making some very significant behind the scenes decisions before they even present the budget to, to council in the fall. So I'd encourage council not to support the amendment.
Mayor Given? I'll say a couple of words here. I, uh, would like to acknowledge that the MSI was brought up by Mr. Thiessen and Mr. Uh, Given and the RCMP contracts. There's a lot of uncertainty there. And this could be million dollars that we're talking, and tens of millions of dollars it's going to cost the city. And, uh, with that, I will not be supporting the, the amendment and I would be supporting the original motion. And with that, I have councillor Dylan Bressi here.
Thank you Chair O'Toole. I'm just hoping to close, so I want to make sure that nobody else open speak before I close.
Councillor O'Toole, if I could say one thing?
Yes, I was just about to get you in the queue here before Mr. Bressi spoke. Please go ahead.
I don't want to speak to the amendment. I'd just like to speak to the motion once the amendment is, um, voted on. Thanks.
Okay. I haven't forgot about you. Go ahead, Mr.
You know, I, I'm actually really resenting a couple of the comments that were made. One is talking about, about come to budget time and vote against things you want there. Well, my recollection of last budget time is there were some of us that were trying to look further into the future of 2019. And we're trying to discuss the four-year budget and we got our hand slapped several times by the chairs and others on council to have expediency with that budget, with those budget negotiations, rather than looking at the future. So this is something that I'm happy to stand by, what, what I believe in and what I'm voting for. And I tried to do that last budget time and was not given the opportunity. So I resent that comment. But also I think that there's, it's interesting, we, I'm very aware of some of the challenges that have been brought up in terms of increased funding for DTS, in terms of likely rising of RCMP costs, in terms of, who knows what's going to happen with MSI. Something else that I haven't heard anybody else mention, mention, but sorry if, sorry if you did. But I think that there is likely a need to spend more on our homeless and our opioid crisis here in Grand Prairie. And it's actually those unknown costs that are wanting me to be aggressive on our other spending. As I said before, I am supportive. If we're going to expand, expand, extend spending in other areas, then I think we should be revisiting this tax rate. But for me, it is completely reckless. If you want to say reckless, it's reckless to say we're going to have a 3.75% increase just to maintain the status quo. What happens if we all of a sudden have to spend millions more in these other service areas? Are we going to have an 8% tax increase? And I, I don't know. Where does it stop? For me, I see these big unknowns in the future. And I see these areas of community need that are high priorities to me and I think to the rest of council. And it makes me think, holy smokes, we have got to make sure that all of our spending in other areas, it's not just spent more efficiently, but also by administration, but also council's targeting it's where it needs to be. I think we need to be aggressive with our status quo budget because we've got those big unknowns in the future. So I'd encourage council, whether you support .8% or whether you support another number, and encourage us to, with those thoughts in mind of MSI, RCMP funding and these other increased spending, please, 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 let's make sure that the current things we're doing are actually top priorities to this community and we're doing it as wisely as possible. Those unknowns in the future, it is so reckless to say that we're going to increase our taxes by, by more than double what inflation's been on average for the last 10 years.
I have nobody else in the queue? And there is a motion on the floor. It's an amendment to the original, uh, motion of raising the taxes to .0, .8? .8%? With that, I call for the vote. And start now. Okay, uh, Mayor Given?
Opposed.
Okay. And councillor Clayton?
Opposed.
Opposed? Thank you.
Yes, opposed.
And I will display the results. I misvoted. I apologize. My was to go with a no. And that still carries as a, as a defeat. Thank you. So we'll go with the original motion. And that is to be .3, or 3.75. And I'll call for the vote now.
Councillor O'Toole, can I just close?
Okay, sorry.
I'd like to speak to the motion before Mayor Given closes, if that's possible.
Sure, Mr. Clayton.
Thank you councillor O'Toole. Uh, my comment was going to be in regards to councillor Thiessen said he wasn't sure who the, who the .8 was pandering to. And although I don't support the .8, um, I am not in support of the .375. And, and I, I want us to be, uh, respectful. There's no pandering to anybody. I think that the intent of what councillor Bressi and those who are not in support of the motion are trying to do, are trying to be, uh, realistic about residents in our community and, and what the expectations are from them of council. It's, it's very important. It's been indicated to us throughout that people appreciate the work that's happening right now in order to keep the budget in line. And, and with putting the motion at 3.75, my concern will be if the administration and, and mid-level management throughout the system decides to put, starts to put their budget together, that there will be an expectation that they're going to be able to grow. And, and I don't think council's given that direction of, of which departments they want to grow, if any, and which departments they are prepared to decrease. As Mayor Given mentioned, council should come with a list of things that, services that they are prepared to cut. But by giving that force of a 3.75, my fear will be that the administration and mid-level management start making their plans, whether it's hiring people, growing programs, whatever that looks like, that there will be an expectation that we are growing. And I don't think that's been established by council. Um, I am more comfortable with the rate of inflation, some no higher than 2%. Uh, but the 3.75, in my opinion, is simply too high. That's the expectation that we are looking to grow services. And we haven't determined that at this point. So I won't be a supporter of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Given, you're here to close?
Sure. Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. Was there somebody else that wished to get in before I close?
Yeah, we have one person, actually two people.
Yep.
So, uh, Mr. Palat?
Thanks Chair O'Toole. I just wanted to, I, I guess it's, it's nice hearing the debates and I appreciate that we're, again, having this now. But, you know, the, the one that I keep coming back to that, that's hard on me is there's a lot of uncertainty in everybody's life. Every time they go home, there's a lot of uncertainty in every business owner. And it's something that to my core, I don't understand why governments are allowed to be different. And I, I guess I need to at some point have that explained to me. Everybody else has to deal with uncertainty every single day, but yet it seems like when it comes to government, there's like, well, this could happen or that could happen. I, I don't think that's acceptable to the community anymore. And I think 3.75 is just simply unacceptable to start as a number. Like, like councillor Bressi said, how can we say, let's go double inflation? How is that fair to people after a while? And, you know, we, until we can start, start showing our community through transparency that our spending is where it needs to be, I can't support that sort of stuff. And I, and I want to support the sort of things. I want to show the community we have great value in things. And I, I don't think we have horrible value. I think we're off by a couple of percent here though. That's the difference is that, you know, 2% adds up. And if we had 1% increase a few years ago that we shouldn't have, and 2% this year that we shouldn't have, that adds up over time and it puts us in a spot where it's very hard to claw back. And so, um, I, I think the uncertainty thing for me, I'm having a hard time with that because that's life. That's life for everybody. The other thing I'm having a hard time with is coming with a list. I mean, jeez, how many times have I been told I'm in the weeds? How many more lists would you like me to bring or ideas would you like me to suggest to be told that I'm not in the weeds? So that's not our role as councillors. We're told that quite often, that that's not our role. We have a, so we have one employee and we have a, a leadership team that we have to trust. I think the goal of today is to set a number. But if we're coming to council with ideas, I think that's a really slippery slope to come at budget with because I'll come with a hundred of them and, and I'll, and I'll fight for all a hundred of them. Of where I honestly think we could save money. But I don't think that's the role of council to come and suggest, I want to move lawns less. I don't think that's our job. So I think our job is to have a number and have the confidence with the CLT that we have, that we have a strong CLT, that they'll achieve it. Is it going to be hard for them if we go lower? Absolutely. Is, is it right to go hard on them? Maybe, maybe we do not. But we have to make that decision as a council of a number we're comfortable without getting into the weeds. So I'm hoping we're not coming in November with ideas of how we're going to tell administration of how to reduce the number, just that we're going to settle on a number.
Okay, I have councillor Friesen and councillor Thiessen. Councillor Friesen, Thiessen just backed out. So we have councillor Chris Thiessen.
Thank you very much, uh, Chair O'Toole. Uh, and thank you for this round of debate. Uh, I think, uh, it's good and I think administration is sort of crossing their fingers or looking at what, what, uh, we're going to land on. I, I don't see the 3.75 as an irresponsible number. And I have total faith in our administration that they're going to work within the constraints of whatever we do. I just don't, as I said before, I don't want to chop off the wheels on the cart before they start running. Uh, uh, there are, there are a bunch of unknowns. We've already discussed those. Um, but I, I don't think, uh, setting a, a rate at 3.75, that's, that's movable. Like if we want to, if we want to pull a capital project for a year or two, sometimes that's all it takes to lower it down to that 2% and get it down even lower. We're already challenging our administration to lower already what they, what they're anticipating, what they might have to do. And this is really based off of decisions that we as council make. Uh, I think, uh, we're in the public trust. Uh, and, and as I alluded to earlier, I don't want to wind up like a city like Winnipeg where they had about 10 years of 0% and 1% increases. And then they have this $120 million infrastructure deficit. I don't want to get there and I don't want to have a service deficit either. Because, uh, if my phone's the only one ringing, I'd hate to see it if everyone's phone is ringing because the people aren't getting the services that they expect out of the city. So I want to make sure that we keep running, that we're operational. And I don't think our administration is going to be greedy and build in growth where we don't need it. I think they're going to build in the growth where we have to, uh, based off of decisions that are coming into fruition through negotiations or otherwise over the course of the summer and the fall. So I, I really have faith that administration will prioritize where those monies are budgeted and spent. Uh, and I don't think we're going to grow every department. And just as a reminder, again, we've had a lot of different services at the city, uh, you know, maybe we shouldn't be doing, but they've come forward to committee meetings and other stuff. And when it was put down on the table for council to, to say, yeah, we need to make a decision on this, especially the people who voted in favor of reducing the taxes further said, oh jeez, I didn't know. But maybe we don't want to get rid of that service. And then that really handcuffs administration further. So we have to be thoughtful in this process. And I really encourage people to, you know, set the bar. It's still, for some it's high. For some it's okay. Uh, and probably for some it's too, too low of a bar at the same time too. But, uh, I, I would encourage everyone to support this motion.
Very much. Councillor Thiessen? We got one more, Mr. Bressi? And then Mr. Given?
Thank you. Just when I compare us to St. Albert, Red Deer, Erdry, Lethbridge, we've got the highest per capita expenditures. We've got the lowest per capita tangible capital assets. We've got the lowest per capita reserves. We've got the highest per capita debt. Guys, at what time do we, yeah, it's, and now we're saying that we're going to increase spending by more than double inflation? And that's without even taking into account yet, you had searched these around, RCMP, around MSI, around what happens with our homeless crisis next, around what happens with accessible transit? It's just, I just can't support this and I hope the council won't support that either.
Mr. Thiessen, then Mayor Given?
Sorry Chair O'Toole. I guess I have just one question. I don't need a response. But, uh, how are we going to address those situations, uh, if we don't have any money to address it with? Is the question at the end of the day. At a .8% or even lower, I mean, we could go zero, we could go negative again. But how are we going to address those if administration doesn't have the manpower to do it? Or if everybody in their office is working off the side of their desk? It just doesn't happen. You don't find the efficiencies. And as much as I want to address the homeless situation, the opioid crisis, uh, happy staff and whatnot, or buying anything new that the city might need, pickleball courts or whatever. Uh, truth of the matter is, if we, if we limit what management can spend on, they're only going to spend on the priorities. Uh, and sometimes those priorities that are emergent are the ones that we might not be able to spend on. So, uh, I, I just like you to question in, in your own minds, like by reducing the capacity that administration has to spend on the emerging priorities, how are we going to do that with, uh, nothing in the budget? So.
Very much. Mayor Given?
Thanks. Thanks councillor, uh, Deputy Mayor O'Toole to, I guess to close. Um, I, I just make a point for council members that there are, uh, you know, a bunch of different facts that have been sort of stated at the table and in the discussion today. And, and, uh, I think we should all make sure that we are questioning those unless we, uh, you know, and make sure that we're all working from the same set of facts. I heard councillor Bressi say that on a number of measures, he sees us spending more per capita than compared to municipalities. And at least through one calculation that I did, I saw us spending actually, you know, below what most of our peers would spend per capita. Um, uh, the other one is, you know, this idea that 3.75 would be twice the rate of inflation. Um, and I would, you know, offer to council members, um, that the rate of inflation over the past 10 years is not an indicator of what inflation will be next year. Um, it is an indication of what it has been. Um, but there have been times, uh, you know, where the city of Grand Prairie has faced, you know, very high rates of inflation, up to 4% a year, um, you know, in the early 2000s. And so looking at, back at past inflation over the last 10 years, uh, and saying that this is higher than, than what that is, is, um, not the same as looking forward and making an estimation of what inflation may be in 2020. Uh, the other thing that I guess I would just point out and, and remind everyone, the community, I guess, in general, but council as well, the status quo in the city of Grand Prairie's budget for 2020 actually sees an increase above 6%. That's doing everything the same as we are today. Okay? And so no, I don't believe that passing a motion that, uh, gives management direction of 3.75 is saying it's okay to grow. In fact, we are demanding in passing this motion that management find 3.3 million in reductions or savings. this motion that management find 3.3 million in reductions or savings, 3.3 million or more. And I would also point to council that the low hanging fruit is the stuff we've seen this year. If we think that the decisions are going to get easier, or that management's job of finding savings is going to be easier in 2020, I think, I think that that's probably not in alignment with what the reality is going to be. Management found the things that we could do relatively easy and directly. All of the decisions from here on out are going to be more difficult rather than less difficult. So my intent with this motion is for us to not come to a consensus on what 2020 should be, but to give management some reasonable guidance. And ultimately at budget time in the fall, we will have, I can already tell, some pretty hearty discussion and debate about what that ultimate number is. But this is reasonable and prudent guidance to administration.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. So there is a motion on the table for a 3.75 increase in taxes.
Sorry, Counselor O'Toole, I just want to be really, really clear. The motion is directing administration to do their budget preparation to ensure that there is nothing higher than 3.75%. It is not approving the tax increase.
Thank you very much. I misspoke there, that's for sure. A little nervous filling in for you, just saying. Especially when you're talking from the sky. Okay? I can't even look you in the eye, sir. Okay, the motion, we can call for a vote. And with that, start now. Okay. Ms. Clayton?
Oppose.
Okay, I'm going to cancel that vote. Start again, please. And I'm going to ask Ms. Clayton, would you tell us your vote?
Oppose.
Okay. And with that, Mayor Given.
In favor.
Thank you. And I'll display the results. So it is defeated. All right. Would there be someone in council to make another motion, please? Mr. Paulette?
Thanks, Chair O'Toole. So.
Hang on. Just hit your mic, please.
Sorry. We had a 0.8 defeated, a 3.75 defeated. My gut is we should be around 2, but I don't think the group's gut is going to be there. So I'm going to amend a motion that we have a, no higher than a 2.5% increase. I'm not even unopposed that at budget, that that can't go the other way to Counselor Bressi's. I don't want to approve a budget that isn't addressing some of the other things. If the budget's just to approve status quo, I don't want to approve that side of a budget. If the budget comes back, we're going to put money into other buckets. I'm actually okay with it going up from 2.5, but I need to see where it's going rather than just into the general pot. So the motion's for 2.5%. And that's the starting point, I guess. And that's what I hope Mayor Given, I think what Mayor Given was intent was today is to give administration a number. So let's try that number and see how it goes.
Counselor Friesen, you're next to speak.
There we go. Thank you. I can. I actually had requested to speak to make the very same motion that Counselor Paulette did. So having said that, of course, I will be voting in favor of this motion. I'm, this is, I've been listening, listening, and with each speaker, I go back and forth a little bit. But I do think 2.5 is a happy medium. With some of the reductions that we did last year, if we were to continue those operationally going forward, we wouldn't necessarily hit that, that 6% increase that was originally the budgeted numbers. So I think we've got a little wiggle room there. And I also do think that over the course of the year, administration has, really, we've, we've very much signaled that this is a council that wants to reduce increases on an ongoing basis. And administration has been smart enough to see that and, and hopefully keep an eye to that as the year has gone on. Like Counselor Paulette, I wouldn't mind seeing that go up a little bit. I'd be fine around a 3. I would hope to get around a 2, but I, I'm comfortable with 2.5 as that starting point. So I will be in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. Even though it's higher than I may be comfortable with right now, I'd definitely be voting in favor of this. I think it's important to send administration back with, with some direction. And I think for me, it's come budget time, if we're not significantly adding in some areas, I'd like to see this get a little bit lower to whatever the rate of inflation looks like it's going to be at the end of the year, year then. That being said, as I've said a couple of times before, if we've got good reason to increase taxes, such as less provincial funding, such as RCMP increasing, such as where I can go back and tell the community we're investing more in homelessness or more in accessible transit, I definitely do have comfort level with raising our tax levy if we're raising services, or if we're making up for other clear costs pushed down by the levels of government. I want to be very clear about that. And so I'll support this motion, although if there's not good reason to have above tax rate come budget time, then I'll be, then I'll be arguing for us to go the other way.
See no one else in the queue. Mayor Given, you have anything that you would like to say?
Yes. Thanks, Counselor O'Toole, for the opportunity. I won't be supportive of the motion. I won't be supportive of any other numbers at this stage. And at some point, I think you'll find something that council members will agree on. I guess I would just say that whatever number we do end up giving administration direction on today, I have a follow-up motion that I'd like to make.
And Ms. Clayton?
I'm glad. Thanks.
You're fine? Okay. I will call the vote for council direct administration to prepare a 2020 budget with the property tax increase not to exceed 2.5%. And with that, I will move on to call the vote. Start now. All right. Ms. Clayton, your vote, please?
In favor.
Okay. And Mayor Given?
Opposed.
Okay. And defeated. All right, we're back to the drawing board. Looking for another motion, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. So what administration is looking for really is a target. You have a professional team here working on the design of the budget. We need some direction, some guidance on where to go. Negative, positive, that is, that is what we're looking for. We're not looking for decimals. Even would be useful for us to have a range. For example, if you set a range within 1 or 1.5%, that would be useful. So we can design the budget within a specific target. Again, we're looking for macro, not for details. That is the intent of the session today. The discussion will occur in November, and at that time you will see all the different alternatives, the options, the numbers. But it's just general direction we're looking for today. So we're willing to entertain a range as well in the motion, if you, if you're willing to do that. Thank you.
Very much.
Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, sir?
I could, unless there's somebody else in the room ready to make a motion on that point, I could pass one.
Okay, let's, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. I would move that council direct administration prepare the 2020 budget with a property tax increase in the range of 2.5% to 3.5%. Period. I'll just speak to that briefly. Based on the city manager's advice, that provides some latitude that the professional team can use. It does provide council some relative certainty of what that range is. And I guess I would speak to the other council members who may think that that, even that number is too low. I think we can see that there isn't consensus to move anywhere above 3.5 or 3.75. And so if you were a council member who thinks that that may be too deep, I would still encourage you to support this motion because it is clear that we won't have consensus to go any higher than this. And at budget time, when we see what the impacts are, we've heard a number of our colleagues say that they may be open to increasing it to reflect community priorities. And so if you were on the fence because this was felt too deep a cut to you, I would still encourage you to support this budget range motion.
Thank you very much. So I've got three people in queue. Mr. Paulette?
Thanks, Chair O'Toole. I guess I was hoping the range would reflect kind of the conversation in the group today, maybe 0.8 to 3.75. And so I won't support it at that. And not that I don't want to support it, I just think if we're going to run a model and we're going to run, and we're going to ask CLT to find us a range, first I'd rather see it be from 0 to 3.75. And then we sit and debate on the merit of some of those things versus just picking numbers like we're trying to do again. And I'm hoping this allows CLT to still have that opportunity. I guess there's still part of me that I, you know, to counsel, I believe it was Counselor Clayton's comment earlier, is I think the intent for me is to be sending a clear message that just because you want more money doesn't mean you're going to get it. And I'm still very fearful that you're going to have departments that are going to come in with, well, they're saying 3.5, but I'm going to go at 5%. And I think my intent is, I'd love to see more departments try to come in and try to find a way to go to 0. And I think if, if we give those marching orders, it's a lot easier for CLT to have their 36 divisions or 33 divisions set a different budget than if we start setting a number of 3.75. If that number's in there anywhere, it's human nature for people to use it. And so I don't think that's the best marching orders for council to give. And if there's a group, one of our 33 or 36 departments that really feels they have a need, I think they got an opportunity between now and council, when we do budget in November, to come to a committee and really fight for why they need their money. But I think this is to me, you know, without us getting in the weeds, I'd like to see the departments come and show us why they really need more than inflation or expanding at some point. And not just because last year was $100, so now we need $103 kind of thing. So I'm not happy with the range. I'd like to see the range be either 0.08, which was a low that was put out today, or even 0, and have that range.
Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Chair O'Toole. I was, I was going to make a motion, and so I'm going to propose an amendment to the mayor's motion. And it's based off of the discussion that I was hearing, as well as what Counselor Paulette alluded to as well. Now, I can't say I'm in favor of going as low as a 0 or 1%, but I do think that there's a range that needs to be made. And obviously a split in the discussion. So I think more understanding could be had. So I would move to amend the mayor's motion for a range of 1 to 4%. And now I know I'm going a bit higher on that range, but there's, they're just easy round numbers. We're not talking decimals here. 1 to 4% of a tax increase. And I think that way, if we were to evaluate and look at what that kind of means for service cuts and our other administrative costs, we can see that range of 1 to 4%. This isn't a new exercise that the city has undertaken. We've already done it in the previous two years. So I think it wouldn't be too taxing for our departments to look at that. But that's the range that I'm looking at based off of the discussion. So if I'm able to, I'd amend the motion to say 1 to 4% of a tax increase.
Well, that's pretty wide open numbers. And I'm just going to ask administration, will they feel with that? I don't know if that's the right thing to do or not, but I'd feel more comfortable with that. Is it clear enough? Is there too wide a gap?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I will refer this to our corporate services director after a few words. I, my, my personal view is a little bit too wide. Our preference will be to narrow down to 1.5 to 2 percentage points. It's easier to design. Otherwise, you will be facing a wide variety of alternatives for the 3 percentage points in November. Too many variables. We have thousands of line items on the budget, and 3% point is quite wide. But I will defer to Susan as an expert on this, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. So I have to agree with the city manager. It is a wider range than we had hoped to realize tonight. As you can appreciate, 3% is, you know, $3.3 million that could make a significant difference one way or the other. So my hope would be to have a narrower range to try to satisfy council's desire.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you for, yeah, I see that, Mr. O'Toole. Thank you for that wisdom on your side. I will withdraw my amendment.
Much. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you. So I just want to ensure that I've, that I'm following right. So right now we're discussing a motion to, from Mayor Given, set a range between 2.5 and 3.5%. Is that correct? Um, I think for me, I can't support this. And it's just one of those moments where I wish I had a crystal ball and I could pull back, and I could figure out what the inflation rate's going to be. For me, that's, that's actually the big question, question there. Where, for me, kind of my intent of where I was going is, it's, I was going more aggressive than what I suspect inflation will be, with the intention of if management came back and showed us what that aggressive budget looks like, we'd have the ability to go, whoa, 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 hold off, here, here, here. But really, my goal is whatever increase we have to the average taxpayer, I want it to be at the inflation level, no higher. It doesn't necessarily have to be less, but I want it to be at the inflation level, unless I can justify to them, while here the changing costs from senior levels of government, or here are the services we're adding to put it above inflation. And for me, because that inflation's kind of, kind of my target and using my best crystal ball I can, 2.5%, I just don't reasonably see 2.5% being, the inflation rate going above, above that. For me, it seems like the intent of this motion is saying, we're okay increasing spending even over and above inflation. Inflation, for me, I can't support it for that reason.
I just want to make sure everybody's aware, this will be our second year of priority-based budgeting, and they're finding good ways to save money and putting in place what priority-based budgeting is. And I think we're going to find some savings in that. And I, I'm totally in favor of the 2.5 to 3.5 motion. And I would urge our council members to think that way. There's a lot of things that, that we knew going into priority-based budgeting, we would find savings over the years. We found savings last year, and I'm pretty sure we're going to find a lot more savings this year. As stated by Mayor Given, it was supposed to be over 6%, and we're sitting now that we're going to possibly reduce it to 3.75 at one time. And we're up to that number now to debate. So I see nobody else in queue. Ms. Clayton, do you have anything that you want to add to this conversation?
I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. And Mayor Given, did you want to close?
Sure. Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. You know, I would just, again, encourage, council members appreciating, there's a pretty wide divergence of views here. I would encourage council members to support this motion, even if you think that it's on the high side or if you think that it's on the low side. We are trying today at an early stage to give management more direction. There will be a significant number of decisions that we will still have to make, and that could see the budget go one way or the other in the fall. So we still have that control, that ability. But this is a very practical step in giving management that direction. And so if you were on either side of the coin, I would encourage you to support this motion so that management can do the significant amount of work they need to do to find those, you know, $3 million in savings over the current status quo.
All right. Thank you for closing. With that, we'll move on to the vote. And that is to be 2.5 to 3.5. So council directs administration to prepare the 2020 budget with a property tax increase not to exceed 2.5 to 3.5%. And with that, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Please vote now. Looking for one more. All right. Ms. Clayton, do I have your vote?
opposed.
Opposed? Okay. Mayor Given?
In favor.
Favor. Okay. And the results are... Three, four, once again, defeated. Councilor, it's defeated. So, Mr. City Manager?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So I have a suggestion for council in light of the debate. What I'm hearing is there's no appetite to go negative rate this year. I'm hearing numbers hovering around inflation mark in general. So the suggestion will be that we will design a budget to the best of our abilities, and you will have an opportunity in November to exercise the different options. That will be hovering around the inflation level, up and down a buffer. But that will be the general direction I'm hearing without voting a specific number today. So it's clear, it's not negative. It's inflation hovering around that number with a buffer, probably a percentage point. We can design that type of budget and present to you with different options. And in November, there will be a full debate and vote on that. Thank you.
Just go through the... Ellen Bressi?
Great. Thank you all. I was going to try making a motion with a specific number range, but maybe I'll take the city manager's advice and I'll make a motion that council direct administration to prepare a budget with its, within 1% of, I'm looking for exact wording, if I should say inflation rate or the best estimation, or its best estimation of inflation. So yeah, how about I'll say, prepare a budget within 1% of its best estimation of inflation. And the intent of that is let's get a neutral budget. I think that's a pretty neutral budget. And at that time, it would be, I think that could set us up well to have discussions either way at council. It's that those of us who want to see a decrease in spending come and argue, well, here's what the status quo looks like, here's a few places I'd like us to cut back from status quo. And that also give a few of us opportunities to say, well, here's a few areas of growth and here's, and here's how I could justify going above inflation based on those areas of growth. So I think that could give us a good budget to discuss. So that's the motion I'll make.
I have two people on the queue, Councilor Palat and Eunice Friesen.
Thank you, Councilor Palat. My question is for clarification. Councilor Bressi, is your intent to meet the best estimation of inflation plus or minus 0.5% or plus or minus 1% when you say within 1?
I was, I was thinking plus or minus 1 either way, but I'm, I'm open to, I'd probably support, yeah, I was, I had one within 1%. So I guess that would be a range of 2% that I'm giving, and that motion was my original intent.
Any other comments regarding that motion?
Yeah, Councilor O'Toole.
Yes, go ahead. Mayor Given?
Yeah, so I really disagree with the specifics of the motion, but I will support it. And the reason that I will support it is a part of the job of council is to be able to find a consensus that allows things to move forward. And there will be other debates that we will have about the specifics come budget time, as I've referenced before. And I guess, you know, just for council's reference, you know, if we wanted to look across Alberta, there are other large cities that have had a difficulty achieving a workable consensus at council, and it has had a negative impact on their administration and on the ratepayers. I'm thinking specifically of Calgary, that because council members just were not able to find a workable solution that everybody could at least agree to for a period of time, their city is facing some challenges. And their council, frankly, is facing some public perception challenges. So while I disagree with the specifics of the motion, I am happy to have that discussion debate about, about those specifics later on. Our management needs us to do our job of giving them some direction so that they can build a budget. At budget time, we will decide whether or not we feel it meets the community's needs, and that will be our job at that point. But for today, our job is to give management some direction. And it may not be something that we all love, but that's, that's what we, that's what we're required to do today. And I think, I think we're doing our due diligence if we give this direction. So I will support the motion because I feel it's our responsibility to give that direction at this stage.
I have one person in queue, Councilor Palat.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I think it's a good motion. I actually think in a lot of ways, it's probably where we should land it on the beginning. To me, when I look at things, inflation is a number that we know is real and it happens every year. I almost think that should be the benchmark for every budget every year is what's inflation plus or minus. And then you start coming back and start going, we're adding services, we're adding things, or we're deleting services, and you go from there. I think using inflation as a number is the only benchmark we have. Otherwise, it's kind of touchy feely from there. That's the only real number we have other than our current budget. So I will be supporting the motion, and I look forward to the conversations that I'm hoping administration's going to lay out, you know, how it would impact if we changed a quarter percent or a half percent and where they would recommend that change coming from. And I think, you know, that's, that's going to be a better conversation this year at budget than what, what happened last year. So I think it's a good range, and hopefully it gives administration what they're looking for today.
Okay. I have a question for Jackie Clayton. Did you want to speak on this at all?
I'm good, thank you.
You're good? Okay. So there is a motion on the floor to council direct administration to prepare the 2020 budget with the property tax increase not to exceed 1% plus or minus of the estimated inflation. Is that correct, Mr. Bressi? Thank you. Everybody understand that one? Okay, so I'll call for the vote and start now. And I'm going to ask Councilor Clayton, what's your vote?
In favor.
Okay. Mayor Given?
In favor.
All right. We will display the results here. What did that happen there? It went stupid. I'm going to ask everybody to revote. Was it good? Oh, it didn't show up. Okay, sorry. Okay, we're good. Electronics weren't working on my side here. Thank you very much for phoning in, everybody.
Sorry, Chair O'Toole, I do, I don't know if I've got another motion on this or not, but I do have a question for administration on this topic.
Go ahead.
Just maybe there'll be a follow-up motion, I don't know. But I'm kind of curious, what I would hate to see is that the next time we talk about this is in November again, and all of a sudden we throw curveballs at administration. I know there's been some talks about training for council on priority-based budgeting or other conversations we might set up, we might have, but just curious, what are the, what directions or what thoughts do we have for how we're going to enable, how we're going to have more conversations about this before budget? Like speaking to, I've got the exact same concerns as Mayor Given. I don't think that anybody was probably particularly happy with this motion today. It's what we could give for today, but I'd like us to get more narrowed down as we get closer to budget.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. So as we go through the process of designing the budget for 2020, we will be involving council in some preliminary updates from time to time on a regular basis, probably after August, during late August, September, to solicit some feedback and some specific items. So we will keep council updated on the progress of the budget. So you will see the evolution of this in preparation for November.
And is there some, there was some talk earlier in involving council and some training on priority-based budgeting, helping us better understand your processes. Is there still plans for that?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. Yes, we are diligently trying to arrange something for mid-July.
Thank you very much. There are no one else is in queue.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes. Mayor Given?
Yeah, I did have a follow-up motion that I wanted to make, Deputy Mayor O'Toole.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Sure, sure, thank you. So I would move that council direct administration bring to budget an itemized list of cuts and associated service level impacts that were required to meet council's budget direction. Period. And I can repeat that if you need to.
We got it all covered. So could you repeat it?
Yep. I would move that council direct administration bring to budget an itemized list of cuts and associated service level impacts required to meet council's budget direction. Period. And I can speak to the intent if that's helpful.
Sure.
Yeah, so, you know, we have, I've referenced it a couple of times, the current number for 2020 is above 6%. And in spite of what has kind of gone around the table a couple of times, anything that we approve different than that is actually a reduction in service somewhere, or a deferral or a cut of some kind. I think it would be wise for council to have a full accounting of that at budget time so that we can decide if there are items in there that we're not comfortable with. And I think that is reasonable for the public to see what was required to get to that number that management shows up to budget with. I would be concerned about management providing in-camera updates on an ongoing basis about budget preparation and what strategies they're employing, because that doesn't give the level of transparency that I think the public would expect from us when we're making this level of decision. And so it also allows council to decide for themselves if something is a priority or not, but based on administration's professional recommendation. So the intent is have that list of the strategies or cuts and service level changes that management had to employ to get to the direction that we gave them today.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask Councilor Jackie Clayton if she has any questions or comments.
No, I, I mean, just quickly, I'm in support of this motion. Thanks.
Thank you. I have Councilor Palat, if you want to try.
Yeah, thanks, Chair O'Toole. I guess the only concern I have with this is we're talking about decreases. I think if we're talking about transparency and full transparency, we also need to let the community know where we're increasing. So I think for me, I would want to see the word increase in there as well. I think if we're going to get to budget and people are going to say, why did something go up? I'd like to know why as well. So I think I wouldn't be able to support the motion. I would support an amended motion that had the word increased in it. But I think if we're going to be for full transparency, if we're talking about decreases, we should also be talking about increases. I can appreciate that administration did a budget that was showing a 5.25% increase. We worked off of 2019, and we may be able to break even off the budget we had. So the budget moving forward should be based off of those numbers, I feel, and not what was forecasted as hypotheticals potentially. And I'm not trying to be slanderous or negative to administration, but the 2019 numbers are accurate and real. I'd rather see us work off of those moving forward than what we had forecasted of why they were going up to 5.25. And so I'd want to know why we're increasing from what we're at in 19 and not just why or where the decreases are coming. So I wouldn't be able to support the motion in its current form, as I do want to know where the increases are happening as well. And I think our community owes that for transparency.
I'm going to ask Mayor Given if he would be okay with this, with this change of the wording a slight bit. Council direct administration bring to budget an itemized list of adjustments and associated service level impacts that are required to meet council budget direction.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. I guess I would be comfortable with that. The, I guess the question that I have is, and the understanding that I've had is that in the past, our budgets really have shown all the increases. In a time where, you know, the context has been, you know, either hold the line or have some kind of increase, then really what a budget does show, the entire process demonstrates where that goes. We are actively saying that management is going to have less financial resources in 2020 than they were expecting before we made this motion. And I would like to understand, you know, what it took to do that. And I would like that to be very clear for all of us. So if the suggested rewording of the motion will meet that intent of making clear what management needed to do to bring forward, you know, I don't, I don't want to see just where service levels increased. They need, we haven't had a budget where management clearly demonstrated where service levels were changing or decreasing, because that just hasn't been the budget that we've passed. And so I want it to, I want to ensure that all of us can see that when we go on budget. So to, question then to the city manager, the suggested rewording, would that, would you imagine bringing forward a clear accounting of the strategies that management had to employ?
Want to ask that a question again? Mayor Given?
I just want to, yeah, I just want to understand the city manager's perspective if this suggested rewording to adjustments rather than reduction, if that rewording will actually make clear the difficult decisions that management will have to be making and will, yeah, that might not otherwise be seen by council. I think it's important for us to understand the things that, that our direction has impacted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The interpretation of the word adjustment for management is that can go both ways, increases or reductions, both on a monetary impact or service level. So that's the reason we prefer to use, to use the word adjustment instead of cut or increases. Adjustment could go both ways.
Point of voter. First of all, I, first of all, I don't believe that our procedures allow for friendly amendments. And I think that making a change such as this will change the intent of what it is that I was prepared to vote on. So if there's going to be an amendment made to the suggested motion, then I would, I'd like to see it done formally.
Well, there was no amendment made. It was a suggestion to ask the mayor at this point in time what his thoughts were. We did not vote. And with all that, I just want to know how he would be in a comfort level with that.
No, I, Councilor O'Toole, I, I'm comfortable with my motion. If a council member wishes to amend it, then fine. But, you know, my, my intent is really to have us clear and have council members clear on the, on the service level impacts or reductions that they're, that they're supporting. And so I think I'm more comfortable with my motion as it was originally worded.
Thank you very much. Okay, we can move on to Mr. Blackburn.
Thank you. I would like to speak in support of the motion that the mayor has made, because it will give us as council an opportunity to consider the real effects of what it is that we're trying to do from a financial perspective. I've said this before, I believe that, that making changes to programs and to organizations based solely on financial decisions rather than on the, the needs and the wants of the community in terms of what those programs are, is an important part of what we as a council need to do. And so I believe that this would give us the opportunity, because we get the specifics, to, to stop and say, well, hey, you know, wait a minute, we don't really want that to happen. And that would give us the opportunity to allow the end result to be a little more flexible as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bressi?
Great, thank you. I might have, I might move an amendment, but first of all, I don't know if I'm quite understanding the, understanding the intent and the effect of the motion in terms of, would this be giving us adjustments that were made between the approved 2019 budget and the proposed 2020 budget? Or would this be highlighting reductions that were made between the 2020 budget as a made between the 2020 budget as it stands now and the 2020 budget as it's gonna be presented to council based on today's direction? So I'm see, I think I've seen from the city manager, his understanding would be from the proposed 2020 budget to the 2020 budget.
Corporate Services Susan Walker, she's okay with that. Councilor Eunice Friesen.
Thank you, Chair O'Toole. I was prepared, I was going to ask the same clarification that Councilor Bressi asked, and I'm completely with, with Councilor Blackburn. It's all well and good to talk about percents and numbers and, and dollars, but the reality of what it means is when we can see exactly what that service means to the folks that have been asking us to get taxes better in line. So not only does it speak to us with what actually we are doing and what it really means to our residents, but it also shows our residents what it is that we're doing with the taxes that we ask them to pay. However, I, I'm a little concerned that it compares to a proposed budget instead of comparing to what was approved for 19 and how then it impacts what the real service levels are now, as opposed to what's not real, what was just a proposed service. So I would like to suggest that an amendment be made, if I may.
You're welcome to do so.
Thank you. So I would like to amend the motion to state that it reflects services relative to 2019 level of services.
See if that is okay with our corporate services, we can get that happening, so.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. So I, I'd like to just point out that in the 2019 budget, we do have a number of items, strategies that we were presented that were not tied to any specific program. And so it's going to be problematic for us to show differences in that instance. The other thing is, we are trending to a deficit situation. So we absolutely can do whatever council wishes us to do. It could turn out to be a significantly long list of items.
Thank you. I'll withdraw the amendment, but I will not be supporting the motion because, again, I think that if we say it's gonna reduce services, we'd better understand that that reduces what people are experiencing in services now, not what the future services they may have experienced would have been. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I've got...
So I'll withdraw, but I won't support the motion as, as it stands.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just to clarify, keep in mind that the baseline for 2020 is tax impact of plus 5.5%. You know, that was the tentative budget approved for 2020. So council approved 2019 budget with a minus 4.1% reduction, and the tentative three years in the future, so the 2020 benchmark was plus 5.5. So we need to compare any adjustment in levels of health service, departmental budget, et cetera, with that benchmark. So our intent, and we met last week at CLT, is exactly what Mayor Given is suggesting, is a list of adjustments and the impact associated with each adjustment in different areas. So an explicit, clear explanation of where those adjustments may occur within the corporation. So you would, you will see, you will see that information. But the benchmark, we will start at the 5.5% tax impact and associated budget versus the new benchmark that will be estimated inflation plus minus 1% as per the motion today. So we're gonna compare those two in terms of level of service and monetary budget per department.
Thank you very much. Councilor Palat.
Thanks, Chair. I'm really struggling with why we're not using actual 2019 numbers and using those. I'm really struggling with hypothetical numbers for 2020. And this is, again, not a, I appreciate a four-year budget and you're looking forward, but we have actual 2019 numbers for full transparency to the community. I would like to know why 20 went up 5.25. I'd like to have that laid out in a forum that we could actually show the community why it was even forecasted to go up that much. I think it's really remiss to the community if we're not using the actual numbers of 19 to base our studies off of, moving forward versus what we had budgeted for 2020. And yes, we may have approved it, but we approved 19's number at minus 4.1. I, for me, I, I need to understand why it would, that's a 9% swing in its way. And if we can show the community of where all that nine, almost $10 million went, I could get behind that in theory. But right now, I haven't been able to feel comfortable with why that swing was happening so dramatic. And we know that 2019, if we are running a shortfall, part of that shortfall is some of the council decisions made were a little late. And so they didn't see the full savings in 19 that we wish we would have saved. Those, those savings will happen in 20. The decisions we've made this year will actually be full force in 20. And so I'm just, I'm, I can't support a motion that's using 2020 numbers that were hypothetical and not real, when we have 2019 numbers that are very real that we can use off of. And I think we owe that to the community. We have to show them we're at a dollar, and next year, we're gonna go to a dollar three or a dollar five or whatever the dollar amount's gonna be. Line by line, we should be able to show more of the spending increases where. And so when we're using numbers that we haven't even, they're not real yet, they're a budget. Let's use the real numbers and work off of them and see where the number washes out. I don't know how else we can be transparent with the community if we're using hypothetical numbers, working backwards off of those. So I just, I'm struggling with that one.
City Manager.
Thank you. So the, the short answer is we have a different tax base. So decline due to the reduction from the originally proposed minus 3% to minus 4.1, and the different strategies that council voted, like splitting the tax, the debt restructuring, 50% to replenish financial stabilization reserve, that trigger a different tax base in 2020. That's the reason we need to use 2020 numbers, because the tax base changed. We can do the exercise using 2019 numbers, but would be more realistic to use the real tax base with the strategies that council voted. However, you have control over those strategies, remember that. So you can split again the debt restructuring in different ways if needed.
Thank you very much.
Councilor O'Toole.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Given.
When there's an opportunity. I don't know where you are in the queue. But I guess if now is appropriate, I would just sort of further add in addition to what the city manager said. The reason that we may want to consider 2020 is because at budget last year, management, I believe, recommended a number of deferrals of things that could be put off to 2020. And so they are reflected essentially in the 2020 number today. And we should be aware, if we're essentially approving a budget that further defers something, management should be in a position to, to help us understand what that is and what the impact is. So it's not necessarily just a decrease over a service level that somebody is receiving today. In a number of cases, or at least in some, I'm sure that there will be situations where the difference will be that management was recommending, we could hold off on doing something until 2020, but we will try to continue to hold off on it for longer. And we should be aware of that. I think that that's why you would also use 2020. I don't disagree that we should compare against 2019 actuals. That's reasonable. And I think that that's, you know, very possible, because we will have, you know, the actuals from 2019. But the reason that you would also use 2020 is because it would make council aware of where we are continuing to defer, and in some cases, potentially against management's first instincts, let's say it that way.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna move to Mr. Council Bressi.
I'm really struggling with this, 'cause as you guys know, I love information, and I, and the more daddy feeded to me, the happier I usually am. What I'm struggling with, though, is this is a really frustrating process to me in terms of, we do have a divided council when it comes to budget time. And, and I'm on a different side than certain voices, than certain voices in council. And forgive me if my recollection is incorrect, but my recollection of last year was we originally had, we had longer budget deliberations than we end up having. We end up getting a few days of budget deliberations. My recollection is that myself and a few others raised concerns that we weren't gonna have enough time to have those fulsome budget deliberations. We went with the shortened budget deliberations. And my recollection of the time, and again, forgive me if my recollection's off, but my recollection is there were some of us who got our hands slapped for wanting to get into 2020 and beyond budgets. We, we said, hey, due to the time constraints here, we're gonna stick on just looking at the next year. And now it kinda feels like you're trying to hold us, you're trying to ask council to hold itself accountable to a 2020 budget that we weren't even, that we never even weighed in on. And, yeah, that, that feels a little bit, that feels a little bit off to me. And for that reason, I don't think I can support this as much as I like more information. I'm scared that when you're not talking about area, when this isn't a budget that council really had fulsome debate on, and when we're not talking about the areas where we're also increasing spending and we're also adding to, and things, I, I don't think it's appropriate to just look at, hey, community, here are all the places where we're cutting spending, when we're not even necessarily cutting spending. But that's what it kinda feels like we're doing there. So for that reason, I don't think I can support this motion.
Very much, Mr. Bressi. We have Council, Corporate Services in the queue. Oh, we're out of there. And Council Blackburn.
Thank you, Councilor O'Toole. I just wanna reiterate that really what this list will give us is an opportunity to turn this from a financial-only discussion into a discussion about the needs and wants of the community and what it is that we want to meet or not meet. And whether those plans for 2020 were fully discussed or not, we had the opportunity to see what things were deferred from 2019 to 2020. And we have some feelings about whether or not those things should really happen. And so if we can look back at a list that says, hey, look, here's what we talked about last year, here's, here's what, what our 2020 plan is according to administration's best work.
I don't know who's got their microphone on up there or radio, but something's happening.
Just to, to, to finish my point, I, I think that, I think that we're putting too much weight on the implications of this list. It's simply a list that's gonna help us look at what it is we're doing for the community in the upcoming year, as opposed to simply looking at what the bottom line looks like.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blackburn. All right, so we have, next in queue is Councilor Palat.
Thanks. I'm just, a question for administration. I'm just wondering, I think that our director, or city manager, Glanti referred to, but I'm just, is the exercise a lot different if we use the 2019 actuals and go up? Because I'm kinda with Council Bressi. We never got to talk about 2020. Now we keep talking about this 5.25 that I still don't understand where it came from. And if we go that way, to Council Bressi's point, we're acting like we're cutting service in the community that we haven't even done yet. And so I don't like the messaging. I guess I'm really struggling with how we message this. If as a council, we don't fully understand it, how do we possibly message that to the community if we're not using actual numbers? And so I don't know how we get around that unless we're using 2019 actuals. And I'm not sure if administration can give us, you know, can use the 2019. I'm fine with you guys coming forward and saying, hey, in 2019, we assumed your debt restructure was 100% gonna go to there. We, we chose as a council to put half of that to, to reserves. So that probably had a $1.6 million impact or whatever the number was. That's a change. So I think if I could see those, and I think the community has a right to see those, I can, based on how we get to 5.25 and where we're cutting, but to use 2020 numbers that haven't happened yet, I just, I think from the, the business community, we're really gonna struggle with using numbers that were hypothetical and working backwards off of them, using actual numbers and working forward with them. Seems like a really easy, educational, transparent way for us to do it. So I can't support the motion unless it's 2019 actual numbers. I'm just wondering if that's something administration could do or not.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Absolutely sure, we can include actuals. However, remember, this is November 2019, so we won't have year-end. We may have forecast or actuals to probably September, Susan, September, and for, a year-end forecast, but that will be an indication of actuals. And then the 2020 tentatively approved numbers, next column. And then if there is a proposed adjustment, another column, and the explanation about the adjustment. So sure, we can, we can totally do that, no problem.
Well, I appreciate that, and thank you for that. So with that, I'm gonna make an amendment to the motion that it's using 2019 numbers for, for when it comes to budget. So we're using the actual 2019 numbers or forecasted numbers, but that we're using 2019 and not the 2020 forecasted budget numbers for when we do our budget deliberations and where they set their, you know, their plus or minus on the inflation.
Reread.
So Councilor Palat is moving an amending motion for council to add, in quotes, using the 2019 budget actuals and not the forecasted 2020 budget. Does that make sense?
Sorry, that, that, I guess from my intent, that was the intent, is that we're using the 2000 actuals or as forecasted as they can be at that time to use when we're reviewing the 2020 impacts and what we'll do for the budget, and not using the original 2020 budget that we never had a chance to debate. So that's, that's the intent of my motion, is that we're using 2019's actual numbers when we're deliberating, and we're saying pluses and minuses, as Mayor Given made in his motion, and we're trying to show the community where we may have to cut, and where we may have increased, that we're using the 19 numbers that we can actually go line by line and show them the pluses and minuses versus forecasted 2020 budget that we hadn't approved yet.
Councilor, Councilor Palat, city manager said he would show both.
Okay, yeah, if you can show both, and as long as the intent's there, that's great.
Thank you. So I had a whole list of people, and now they disappeared, and now I got them coming back. Council Bressi.
Great, thank you. I just, I wanna make sure I'm tracking with this conversation, so just checking in with administration and our recording secretary. Would this motion be capturing only service level decreases, or would it be capturing increases as well? Because I don't know if the motion, as it's on the table right now, would.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. I have Councilor Palat's motion specifically stating that we are adding, in quotes, using the 2019 budget actuals along with the forecasted 2020 budget. With Mayor Given's original stated motion, directing administration bring to budget an itemized list of cuts and associated service level impacts that are required to meet council's budget direction.
In that case, I'll support the amendment, but I think it's pretty clear to me we need another amendment after this.
All right, I have one other person in queue, that's Council Blackburn.
Thank you, Councilor O'Toole. I'm sure that the mayor, when he... I'm sure that the mayor, when he closes, will, will make sure that we understand the original intention of the motion. But I really think that the motion deals with, his motion deals with impacts to the community and not numbers. And I really think that we've tried to turn this into a numbers issue. And so I'm not in support of the amendment.
See no other people in the queue. Mayor Given, did you want to speak at this point?
Yeah, to, to the amendment, I will support the amendment. I appreciate the desire to see on the financial side, how the numbers work out compared to, sorry, how the numbers for 2020 would compare to the actuals or as close as we could have for 2019, that's reasonable. And I think if we can also see the things that we are going to defer or choose not to do that we hadn't started, I think that that's important. And I think the amendment allows us to do both of those. And I think it does allow us to still have a good conversation about community priorities as, as referenced by Counselor Blackburn. I think this will give us a pretty full picture and that's why I'm okay with supporting the amendment. I think administration understands sort of the combined intent here. And I think it will give us good information to have a discussion from come budget time about what the community priorities are and how much council is willing to provide in terms of financial resources to the organization to meet those community priorities.
All right, thank you very much. So we got motion on the table, we will just repeat it one more time and then we'll call for the vote.
So this is the amending motion by Counselor Palat for council to add, in quotes, using the 2019 budget actuals along with the forecasted 2020 budget.
I'll start off with the vote and you can vote now. I understand that Jackie Clayton, Counselor Jackie Clayton, has left the, and so I'm up to you, Mayor Given, if you'd like to give us your vote.
Sure, in favor of the amendment.
And I will display. And it looks like it's covered. Thank you very much. The amendment has been voted on. We'll go to the original vote now. Oh, sorry, we've got another amendment. Counselor Friesen.
Thank you. So I think we are on the right track with really understanding if we can see what the service level impacts are, we can compare them to our strategic plan in so many words rather than in numbers. However, though the list may be shorter of things that we are increasing, I think that we would like to see adjustments. So I'm proposing the amendment rather than just take out the word cuts and put in the word adjustments.
With that, Counselor Bressi.
Great, I hope the council will support this. I'd point out that we are going into year two of priority based budgeting and the whole point of priority based budgeting is that you make cuts in services that are low priorities for the community so that you can increase spending in high priority areas. And I don't see how we're giving a fulsome picture of what's going on with priority based budgeting if we're not looking at both in service increases as well as service decreases. So I hope that council will support this motion.
Vote on the amendment to include the word adjustments and remove the word cuts. Thank you very much. All in favor, I'm going to call for the vote. And the vote starts now. You guys got to pick up the pace here. Nope, he hasn't. There he is now. Okay, Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you. It's getting to the point where really what we're doing is describing what council, what administration will give to us anyway as they present the budget. I, I think that the original motion really points to talking about some of the things that we may like or not like about the, the cuts that will be made in order to meet council's expectations. But I think that, that it, it would be redundant for us to say, tell us all about the cuts and all about the increases because that's what the budgets going to be all, budget presentation will be all about anyway. So I would suggest that we vote against this amendment and that we vote in favor of the original motion.
Thank you very much. Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I, I guess for me, and maybe it will end up running similar to what budget is, but I think back to the comments that have been made by a few counselors, I might want to make a decision on why we increase in an area and I might have an appetite to spend on one of the areas we might have cut. And I want to know potentially where areas went up so I can find potentially savings to help the areas that got cut. So without knowing the areas that went up, I won't know what areas that I can help spend more money on as, as, as one of the nine votes. So I, I think I'm urging council to support this. We need to see both sides of it. And again, from a transparency thing to the community that would like to see us have more financial transparency and it's something I have a huge appetite for, if we know our pluses and minuses, it helps better than if we just know our minuses. So I would hope that everybody would support this motion.
Mr. Bressi.
Thank you. I think from a point of community trust perspective, I just think we're going to erode so much trust to the community if we just ask for a list of cuts. I think what that looks like to the community is, hey, here's our scary club we're using to justify tax, tax increases. And I know that that's a concern I've had brought up in the, in the past of people feeling like we've communicated budgets that way. And I, and I'd have troubles not saying that that was going on if this was a list we created. I don't think that it's fair to the community or it's an accurate picture if we're just talking about cuts. So I understand what you're saying, Counselor Blackburn, in terms of we're kind of asking them to, to do what they're doing anyways, but I, it's just that we're actually kind of doing that halfway if we're just looking at cuts anyways. But I don't see any reason if we're going to create an itemized list of cuts, I don't see why we wouldn't create an itemized list the other way. I don't see why we'd separate one and not, and not the other. I don't think that's going to be good for community trust we do, so I hope that council won't go in that path.
Okay, try this again. So the word cuts has been removed with the word adjustments in that original motion.
Amended.
Amended motion. So with that, I see nobody in queue. I will move on to the vote and start voting now. Mayor Given, I'm going to ask you for your vote.
In favor.
Thank you. And we have, it passes. Thank you very much. Hey, is there any items to be dealt with, with this particular? Okay. All right, well, we've been talking a lot here lately and we have a main motion to deal with. And are you willing to read that again one more time, just so everybody gets the?
The whole thing?
Well, so we don't have to do it again.
So voting on the main motion as amended, we'll read. Council direct administration bring to budget an itemized list of adjustments and associated service level impacts that are required to meet council's budget direction using the 2019 budget actuals along with the forecasted 2020 budget.
All right. Any other comments? Then I'll move to the vote and the vote will start now. Mayor Given, can I have your vote?
In favor.
Thank you. And that passes. Thank you very much with one objection. All right, now we can continue on with the committee business. And with that, Mayor Given, are you going to hang up now?
Yes, sir. I was only calling in for this one agenda item. Thanks very much, everybody, for allowing me to call in and I'll see you all soon.
Okay, thank you very much for doing that. How does that sound? Okay, corporate, so committee business, 8.1, Infrastructure Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, June 11th, 2019. Who was going to read the minutes from that?
Thank you. So I'd like to move that council accept the minutes of the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, June 11th at 9:00 AM.
All in favor? Thank you. Nobody voting via the internet? And here we go. At unanimous, thank you.
So just in a nutshell, we had, we had the verbal update in the, in the service area. The economic development strategic plan is coming soon. Council can expect to see that through this month. And this is a council that's really indicated economic development strategy is very important to us. And so this will be a, a new strategy on, on what, what that looks like and how our committee plays into that as well. Energy and Environment Sessions, we got some grant funding and held a couple of those in June for residents. And road rehab is now underway, just in case you hadn't noticed. And sidewalk will follow suit quite shortly. The tenders, the requests for tender had gone out. City residents can expect to see 13 stop signs changed to yield signs in the, this summer. And this is following analysis of a number of stop signs in, in the city. We have seasonal enforcement officers that are now on the streets for summers. That'll help with some of that increased foot traffic downtown and that sort of thing. And emergency management is now winding down after being very involved in emergency response due to the wildfires in the High Prairie area. And my understanding is that there are just a few Paddle Prairie residents who remain in Grand Prairie, but everyone's of course gone home to high, high level. And that's it for IPS, thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on to 8.2, Corporate Services Committee meeting held June 11th, Tuesday. And that'd be Mr. Palat.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I'd recommend that council approve the minutes of the Corporate Living Meeting held Tuesday, June 11th, 2019 as presented.
Thank you. With that, I'll call for the vote. Start now, please. All votes are in. Thank you very much. That passes. Any updates that you would like to, or highlights you would like to present?
Yes, Chair, there's a few from our Director of Corporates, Susan Walker. The, the organization has had, the HR, our HR department's been working on a drug and also alcohol policy orientation and at this point over 590 employees have attended. And administrations to continue to support these efforts. Under procurement, over 5,000 Community Connection magazines have been delivered in multiple locations across the region. So hopefully those get picked up and get well utilized within our community. And we did have one issue that we dealt with, which was Trader Ridge Tax deferral, and it was decided not to do anything about that point. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. And we'll move on to the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, June 11th, 2019.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor O'Toole. I would move that council approve the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, June 11th. Thank you.
Right, with that, I'll call for the vote and start now. That passes. Thank you. Any highlights that you would like to bring up at this point?
For sure. Just in response to our fire evacuees, just Community Knowledge Campus in the Twin Ice Arena, the total number of evacuee visits to the Eastling Center is provided by the City of Grand Prairie from May 22nd to June 3rd was 858. Overall, the response was great and all the, all the participants who attended the Eastling Center were very thankful that they had that service available to them. Also, the Dave Bar Community Center has collaborated with the Parks Department to successfully apply for an Edible Trees Grant that will see, or sorry, that has seen on May 29th, pre-kindergarten children and friends planting five apple trees and three plum trees in the facility's green spaces around the Dave Bar, and more trees will follow in the fall there. Also, starting just a couple weeks ago, Food Truck Fridays return to the Mamway Concourse at Montrose Cultural Center and will be running every Friday for anyone who's looking for a good lunch and different than the standard fare that we receive in the downtown area. And thanks to our, our people at the Montrose Cultural Center for organizing that. And finally, there's a bit of business that was taken care of that council will see a little bit later revolving entrance features or sign entrance features, just to keep everyone abreast as to what was happening there. Mayor Given directed administration to proceed with the preparation of a request for proposal for the design, supply and installation of three community entrance feature signs at the north and west gateways and the west entry into downtown. A part of that motion was also to direct administration to include the downtown entrance feature as a separately priced option in the RFP as well. Any funds that were specifically tailored to the north and the west entrances, any, any remaining funds not required for the supply and installation would be moved towards the downtown entrance feature less a 15% contingency. And they will also bring the RFP results and select a proponent back to committee for review of sign options after public consultation. And that is all for my report, thank you.
Looks like you had a long meeting that day.
Usually we do, it's always fun.
All right, well, thank you very much for your report. And we'll move on to the Corporate Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. That'd be Mr. Palat again, thank you.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'd move that council approve the minutes from the, from the Corporate Services Meeting held June 25th, 20, 25th, 2019 as presented.
Thank you very much. That's a real tongue tester. All right.
That's for me.
Yeah, I'll call for the vote and you can start your vote now. The results. Thank you very much, that passes. So any highlights from that meeting that you would like to?
It was a fairly short meeting, so most of it was, we had an in-camera item we dealt with and then we had some, some updates. And so at that point, our tech, assessment and taxation was very busy as it was getting to be right near the end of the, the season there. So there was a lot of work going on in our assessment department. And as discussed earlier, our financial management team was working diligently on the 20 to 20, 2020 to 2023 budget. And I guess we just helped them a little bit with that process or maybe, maybe give them extra work. I'm not sure what we did for them here today that way. And yeah, it was a pretty light meeting other than that, Chair.
Thank you very much. Item 8.5, the Infrastructure Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, June 25th, 2019. Counselor Friesen, would you want to bring that up? You weren't there.
I can, I can report on that.
We got Clyde Blackburn, thank you very much for coming in.
So I would move that council approve the minutes of the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, June 25th, 2019 as presented.
All right. Call for the vote. Voting, you can start now. And voting is in, thank you very much. And we have passed, thank you very. All right, so the next item? Oh, I should let you speak a little bit, sorry.
That's, that's quite all right. I know, I know that you don't see me here very often. Yeah, today I'm here. I'm just going to highlight one item and that is the emergency management. Administration compiled some statistics regarding wildfire assistance, and this is to date on the 25th. There was 8,159 city staff hours of over 100 city staff and over $1.3 million spent in support of assistance to the wildfire, the money to be reimbursed from the disaster relief funding. Evacuees had all departed as of the weekend prior to the meeting on the 25th, according to the report that we got. And I'll just also mention that our fire department supported high level with two trucks and staff to help with their incident management team. So our, our support of our, our friends north of us was fairly significant.
Excellent, thank you very much. And we will move on to 8.6, Community Living Meeting held Tuesday, June 25th. And we will move on to eight point six, Community Living Meeting Held Tuesday, June 25th. Mr. Thiessen, would you like to read that report?
I may. But before I do, I'd just like to also note, just to highlight that the Infrastructure Protective Services Committee meeting, councillor Blackburn needed his, his return to regular scheduled meetings. So it was very, very good to see him there and I know we were all very happy. So thank you for presenting that and being, making up quorum, because if you didn't show up, we wouldn't have had quorum that day. So, so thanks for that. Anyways, on to business at hand. I would move that council approve the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held June 25th, 2019 as presented.
Very much. Call for the vote. You can start voting now. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. And do you have any highlights at this point?
Just, just a couple. Thank you very much Deputy Mayor O'Toole. Just a highlight from the Pride Day week, June 15th and 16th. We saw a lot of spectators and participants around the Pride Day Family Carnival and Pancake Breakfast. It was highly attended, but unfortunately I don't have any numbers to, to inform council about. But also during the month of May, the Dave Bar Pickle Ball program featured 100 and, or served 191 participants. And two additional courts have been added since then for a total of six inside the arena. And evening pickleball times are being added in the month of July as well due to the higher demand. Also, the museum expansion project is underway with consultant. And just for council's information, this project includes replacing the storage trailers on the west side with a concrete slab storage area expansion building, constructing a park storage garage and replacement of the Heritage Village wooden deck with concrete slab deck. Finally, just something to note, maybe for next year, but our Stompied charter ridership this year was down 28% as opposed to the previous year. There was some discussion around the committee table that perhaps was not as well advertised or could have had something to do with what was happening with DTS, but that's all speculative. But what we do know is it's a little over a quarter of what our ridership was down last year for this free service to the Stompied. So hopefully more members of the public will pick up on this and will be able to get the word out a little better and see those numbers rise again next year if we continue to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thiessen. That's good. So I've got the Pursuit of Excellence Committee meeting. Just turns out that I was the only one there to actually be at the meeting other than our public members. But I'm going to ask Chair, regular Chair, Eunice Friesen to just call for the minutes. And then I'll go and talk about the highlights since the Chair was not there. But she can definitely call for the vote on the, on the minutes.
And so I shall. I'd like to move that council accept the minutes of the Pursuit of Excellence Committee meeting held on Wednesday, June 26th, 2019 as presented.
Thank you very much.
And thank you councillor O'Toole for stepping in in my absence.
And I was stepping in for Jackie's options too, so I did double duty that day. All right, to a call for the motion and start the vote at least. All right, and that passes unanimously. So I will just speak on a few items here. We had some funding sources and we had a total of $21,939 left before the meeting started. And we gave some money to athlete development. We gave some in judo as well as gymnastics, as well as biathlon, and we gave some money away for coach development. I shouldn't say we gave it away. They've worked hard for it and they were able to get the money. So coach development in mountain biking, as well as coach development in athletics. Clinic hostings, there was some money given out to that as, and one of the clinic hostings is this, the Grand Prairie Regional Sport Connection. They are hosting a, an event here and there was money given to that. Travel funding, there was Gymnics Cheer. They got some money for that and cheerleading, as well as travel funding to volleyball. And once again, there was number five people with volleyball. They went to a big competition. And also, we did meet with the Grand Prairie Sports, Regional Sports Connection. And they talked about the initiatives that they are planning on doing and the workshops that they were going to have in the fall. So with that, that is the highlights of the meeting. So thank you. Now, we will go on to correspondence. We have no correspondence. Delegation business, we had the library as well as CAPS. Does anybody want to make any motions there? So I see councillor Thiessen, if you'd like to go ahead.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor O'Toole. I would move that we receive our delegation business from the library as well as from CAP for information.
Thank you very much. We have no notices of motion and at this, oh yeah. I will go back to, we have one inquiry, so councillor Plott.
Thanks. I just wondering, normally we receive those for information, but when the gentleman has here from CAP, he kind of mentioned he would like to try to come and speak with us. So I'm just wondering if, if, if we need a subsequent motion or if administration was just going to reach out so we can maybe have that, them come into the appropriate standing committee to maybe do a presentation so we can have some more dialogue, so we can maybe help them with some advocacy issues as well. So I'm not sure if we'd need a motion for that or if that's just something administration can reach out to them as well.
Sounds like the city manager said he would follow up on that and make some kind of an arrangement. Thank you for bringing that up. All right. Now the queued people are disappeared. We have no notices of motion? Damn, darn, darn. Okay, all in favor? Motions, please. There we go. Passed. Okay. So I will suggest this, we go further to item number 11, notices of motion. We have none. We would normally stop for a recess here and be back at 6 o'clock, but we've got like four minutes before 6 o'clock. And with that, I'm going to ask, do we want to stop for a recess now? And we will come back in what, what do we want to do here, folks? Clyde, do you need more time than the five minutes? Well, I'm asking. I could have demanded that you listen to me, but I'm not. I'm being the nice mayor here. We will return back at quarter after 6. Thank you very much.